Southampton Media. Okay, all right, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Select Board for December 21st at 6:00 PM. Could we start off by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right, we have a kind of a busy evening tonight, we're gonna do one, one quick thing, yes?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the Chair to go out of order and take up the Hendrick land donation deed for signing, please.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, I think we could do that, I know Lucy you have to leave fairly soon, right, and we have to have this notarized, okay. So, we will do that, two seconds on, on just any words of wisdom or gratitude as we start the, the last meeting before the holiday season here. Anyone?
Just want to say thank you to everybody that was involved in the town meeting, did a great job, Robert Floyd, appreciate all your efforts and Ed also for all the preparation work, thank you everybody.
Yep, and for everybody that turned out, we had a good crowd and I think it went well, so thank you, everyone.
And I'm just thankful that we got through all the articles.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, Robert.
Do we have open time for the public?
We will, we're gonna do this first though, we will, sorry, I wanna, I wanna do this so that we don't hold up Lucy here, so folks, yeah, we have a donation of land by the Hendrick family, Ted Hendrick and his daughter Paula, they have been working on this for over a year, I believe.
Probably longer than that, because it was approved by town meeting for acceptance at the February 11th, 2020 town meeting, and I think there was a year prep before that to get it to town meeting, so.
Well, it's been a while, and they've gone through all the process they need to go through with the state and so forth, and this is for 8.3292 acres of land, basically at the corner of Rattle Hill and Coal Spring Road, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's where it is, and so they have gone through the process and they are basically wanting to transfer the parcel as a gift to the town of Southampton, and I believe the Concom Conservation Commission has already accepted that.
At their meeting last night, they voted on the acceptance, and they're gonna come in, at least the majority of four of them, and sign the acceptance page in front of Lucy.
Okay, all right, so what the Select Board needs to do is actually approve the, the actual gift to the town, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
And sign.
Any questions, could I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that pursuant to GL Chapter 40 subsection 8c, the Southampton Select Board having the usual place of business, the Southampton Town Hall, 210 College Highway Suite 7, Southampton, Mass. 01073 hereby approves of the acceptance of the Southampton Conservation Commission from Paula J. Hendrick of the foregoing quick clean deed and the real property described therein.
A second. Okay, two seconds, all right, any discussion, any questions about it?
I'm just grateful, very, very nice part of the family.
Yeah, this is a nice property, not, not quite contiguous with Clearwater Woodlands, but up in that general area, so it's a very nice, nice gesture for the town, so, all right, all those in favor, could I have a vote, please, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously, and we will sign, and then Lucy can do her, her necessary official vote. Thanks Lucy for hanging out.
Thank you Lucy.
All right.
Just the one page?
Just one page? Okay, all right. Great, okay, as we do that, we're gonna actually, Robert, the, the open time for the public comes after our presentations, and we have two short presentations this evening, first with the Board of Health, whoever would like to speak to us about that.
Good evening.
Hi Kate. Yep.
So.
Introduce yourself Kate.
My name is Kate, 189 College Highway, Chair of the Board of Health, I wanted to approach you this evening because of the need to request or appropriate ARPA funding for a couple of different reasons, on December 31st, 2021, the CARES Act funding will expire, and we are seeking funding for contact tracing to go through at least June, because I'm not sure if all of you read that they are ending the Community Contact Tracing Collaborative this week, and so it's going to be very important that we have contact tracing resources available with a continuing escalating number of cases in town, currently about 50, Jerry said that some of the cases had dropped off this week, but we do anticipate that those cases might increase with the holiday gathering, just a half hour ago, we met and voted to implement a mask mandate in all public places, and so I'm just letting you know that, it will go into effect at 12:01 tonight, it will be posted on the website and subsequently on social media, we will make sure that we notify businesses in town that this mandate is going into place, and we're hoping that this will help to, help community members to feel safer while shopping and, and spending time in public places, we also hope that it's a valuable tool in helping to reduce the number of cases in town, so we're, we're hopeful and keeping our fingers crossed there that our numbers stay manageable, and we'll continue to reevaluate that at our future meetings, however, we know that contact tracing efforts, especially in schools, daycares, Norris School has taken quite a bit of contact tracing time, also in daycares, there's been a number of cases in daycares, and all of this requires a lot of effort and time on, on the contact tracer's time, it also requires a lot of collaboration with other town departments, and we just want to make sure that we have a plan over the next six months to address that, and of course, we'll have to continue reevaluating that, we're also seeking to hold at least one vaccine clinic and potentially more vaccine clinics, the first one being on January 8th, and so we are seeking ARPA funding to ensure that we have a police present, presence EMS there, just to make sure that people are safe and tolerating the vaccine well, making sure that we have other resources available, vaccinators, and the goal would be to make this a community family vaccine clinic, we're, we're trying to see if we could have, you know, pediatric doses available as well, but if that's not a possibility through the vaccine collaborative, we would be seeking to have additional vaccine clinics to try to boost our pediatric numbers in town, because they currently remain at a low number, so we're hoping that you will appropriate ARPA funding, so that that way we can continue to host vaccine clinics in town and improve vaccine access for our community members.
Okay, good.
Our, our local Board of Health also continues to exceed the number of hours, and we anticipate that this is also going to continue, because without, we still need to be providing letters for students, for families to be able to return to work, and so there is a possibility that Jerry's hours could be over the budgeted hours, and we just also wanted to approach you about that and see if it would be appropriate to make sure there's ARPA funding available to cover those hours, January 8th is on a Saturday, so we anticipate that those hours will be over scheduled hours. Any questions?
I do, if that's the end of your report, or edit, so, I know you just met on this, you don't necessarily have the numbers, but it sounds like you might be looking for us to approve something tonight, since we don't meet again until the 4th of January.
That's correct.
So.
So the contact tracing, okay, so the contact tracing amount per month is $1,500.
So that would be six, six months you need from January?
For six months, for six months of funding, as far as the hours for EMS, the current clinic is scheduled for three hours, so it would be for custodial hours, for EMS staff to be present at that clinic, as far as hours for the local Board of Health, she estimated that her hours are going over by three hours every pay period, so every two weeks, exact dollar figures I don't have.
So, the, and this would just be the adult vaccines, so, at this point, because you don't have confirmation that pediatric vaccine will be available for the 8th, correct?
Correct.
So, what, within Southampton, isn't the current adult vaccination rate 83%?
That would be for primary vaccination series, I don't believe that that encompasses booster shots.
So you would also be offering the booster?
Correct, yes.
All right, and then, the, knowing that we're going on almost two years here, or soon will be two years of this, and, you know, the Board of Health being one of the departments at the forefront of this, and the continuous extra hours and all that, I wonder if for the next six months, it makes more sense to redirect that overtime money to a temporary employee who's an admin writing letters versus a highly trained competent Director of Board of Health sitting at her desk writing letters when possibly doing other things.
I think that's a great point, and I know the Board of Health would greatly appreciate having an administrative person available to be able to help write letters and provide additional support.
It would cost you more though, John, to have, to have somebody come in to do that, my time runs about three hours maybe every two weeks, and if we have a lot going on, it might be six hours, so it's minimal, I've kept it, you know, dull war, but it, it would cost more money to have somebody come in.
And could you just remind me, your base hours, is it 40?
2974 is my rate.
No, no, how many hours a week is your base, is the extra three hours time and a half?
42, so I would end up working, you know, maybe 35 to 38, depending on how many cases we've got going on, you know, just how busy it gets in that office.
But I guess, the key for me though, is it's all at straight pay?
Yes, I didn't, it's not overtime.
Right.
I've kept it not going over, overtime.
Okay, and then, last question, and I don't know that you have an answer for this, but, the second, the last round of pediatric shots that Norris hosted with the mobile van or the bus was the last one, so all those children that got their first shot are now in the dark and unable to get their second shot.
We are aiming to, so that was done through the state, or, so that was the vaccine bus, and I personally have tried to reach out to the vaccine bus to coordinate other local clinics, their responsiveness is very limited, and they actually have told me on two separate occasions that they are not available to do additional clinics, so I think it's important that we try to come up with other ways to host vaccine clinics in town, in fact, one clinic, they didn't show up with enough doses, so, and unfortunately, when it's hosted by, by people who are outside of the local vaccine collaborative, we run those risks, by hosting vaccine clinics locally, we will have a little bit more control, and these are people that we work with regularly to try to, you know, coordinate clinics, and so hopefully, they will be a little bit more organized and responsive.
Okay, thank you.
And so Kate, those, those that are, those that are gonna be giving the shots at the clinic, are they, are they people from town, are they outsiders, do we have to pay them, are they you guys?
The people who are vaccinators, so a couple of us are signing up for this first clinic, but some of them are coming through the Hampshire Vaccine Collaborative.
Okay, and do we have to pay for them?
They do not have to be paid for, no, it's just be for local custodial, for like administrative support and custodial support.
So the family vaccination one would be January 8th, but there may need to be another one just for kids?
We're, we're aiming to make this, to have, because the pediatric Pfizer doses are actually a different vaccine, so we want to confirm that they're going to be able to have that vaccine available for that clinic, and if not, we're going to aim to have a separate clinic to make sure that we create additional opportunities for, for pediatric vaccines.
Got it, okay, yeah, reading.
I definitely support the case tracing, we're not out of the woods by any means, and I also support the extra like, three hours, you know, until the end of June, we're at the point with the ARPA funds where we haven't committed anything, we want to send out a survey to the entire community and get their feedback and from employees, so this is a little bit ahead of the game, but it still seems like obviously needed.
Yes.
For this whole problem, I guess my issue really is about the clinic, volunteering in the MRC once a week in North Hampton, they've done clinics in Norris, they've done clinics at Hampshire Regional, there's a vaccine available at Walgreens, we're doing them almost every single day at the Elks in North Hampton, we don't have a refrigerator, like, I'm just not sure why we have to have it locally, do you really actually think that it's going to bring in large numbers, I just, you know, there's a lot of work on the part of, I mean, I know what everybody goes through to do these clinics, and I'm just not sure if the, if it's gonna turn out to be what, what's hoped, I just feel like it's, I just wonder if it's an awful lot of work when these clinics are already happening.
We pay money to be a part of the Hampshire, you know, collaborative, and, and so they reach out to us to see if they could help support a clinic here, and they're going to be helping, you know, with our help, of course, we'll be working together to host that clinic, the first one, they anticipate that there's going to be 180 to 200 doses given, which I think is, you know, for a three hour clinic, still worth doing, and if we are able to, you know, have 180, 200 doses booked, then that will show how much of a need there is in, in the local community, and maybe hopefully address some of these folks who were unable to get a second appointment, I've spoken to several people in town who vocalize that they've had trouble finding appointments online, and I've been helping them to try to get appointments.
Right, yeah, right, yeah, Jerry, could you come to the mic, please?
Oops, sorry.
The other thing too, Maureen, is we're hoping to catch some of the students, the college students that are home, because they have to have a booster shot before they're gonna be allowed to go back for the spring semester, so.
Most of the kids though are getting it at school, I mean, UMass has it running every single day.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure that that's a need too, so that's the only question, I mean, I trust that you folks know, you know, what's needed, but I'm just concerned about, you know, paying for, you know, and setting up and the amount of work involved when these things are already happening in communities.
I met with Lauren Daven today, and we went through, you know, and took a look, remember, we did the H1N1 in the library years ago, but she really liked doing it in the cafeteria, so she's got it all organized.
The only thing we have to pay for, for this clinic is the actual.
Custodian.
Custodian and the.
EMS, having EMS there, and.
You said.
If they choose to have a police presence, yes.
Well, for traffic control, if you've got people coming and going, you know, every 15 minutes.
But we're paying to be part of this collaborative?
No, we're not, this is part of the grant.
Right, so we're, sorry.
Okay, you mentioned about the, the collaborative, we're paying to be part of this collaborative, but we don't get.
There's, there's funding that's going from, you know, from, that's, that includes us in that collaborative.
Right.
Right.
Okay, but they don't give us anything in terms of personnel at all to do it in the community?
They're, no.
Okay, so just to explain to me if you will, what's the difference between the clinic they just had at Norris and Hampshire Regional, and what's planned for January 8th?
The clinic at Hampshire Regional was also hosted by the Vaccine Collaborative, that was hosted by the, the local collaborative, the clinic that was hosted at Norris was the state vaccine bus, so that's completely separate than our local collaborative.
Yeah, I just know they're doing clinics everywhere, Gateway Regional, Hampshire Regional, East Hampton, so I just not sure why we have to put out funds for these personnel when these clinics are happening in all these sites, that's all I.
Southampton didn't do the children though, I think they did just a booster on the 19th or 16th of December, I guess.
Yeah.
But we'll also capture anybody that couldn't make that clinic can come to this clinic, because you have to offer it to, you know, surrounding areas.
Okay, I still don't, I honestly just don't understand why when they're doing clinics like, I have a Google Sheets that has clinics all over the valley in every community, so why are we paying money to have it done here, when?
We're not paying for the clinic, the only thing that it would cost us is.
Yeah, you just said EMS, police, and custodial.
For three hours.
For three hours.
Yeah.
For three hours, but that's.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, I just don't know what's the difference, why aren't we?
Go to North Hampton, and if you can offer the family clinic, you might be able to get everybody.
No, but why don't we request that they do a clinic at Norris School, I mean, they're doing them now anyway, what's the difference between the Board of Health doing it and the North Hampton Health, the partner?
This was offered by North Hampton.
Yeah.
By Michelle, and I can't, pardon me, I can't remember her last name, one of the nurses, who is part of the grant.
Okay.
To come in and do the clinic for us.
And I will say that the, the North Hampton, they, they are trying to limit where they're doing clinics now, they will be going forward to only the Elks or the North Hampton Municipal Building, they're actually trying to not have as many outside clinics, because it's taxing on their resources as well, so.
So this clinic would be held at Norris though?
Correct.
Okay, that was good, okay, anything else? Yeah, no? Yeah, anything you have to say? Yeah, John?
The, no, I guess, well, yeah, I guess the only other question I have is, if you opt to have EMS service there, that's gonna be in addition to the EMS service on duty in the town.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, you're not gonna pull the, you're not looking to pull the EMS out of the fire station, have them sit over there in the event there's no call, this is above and beyond the level.
Jerry had that conversation, so.
I'm trying to remember.
And here's my question, if you're pulling them out of the station, they're already getting paid, so you don't need any money for that, if you're putting a second rig on, dedicated for the three hours, and I'm assuming there's not a four hour minimum, then you need the money for that, follow me?
We can do it with whoever's on duty at that time, and then if they get a call and they leave, then we still have the East Hampton, you know, as.
As a backup.
Yeah, I think we don't want to do.
We don't want to keep on incurring costs for the East Hampton, I don't think, at this point in time.
It's okay, just so you know, there's no EMS at any of the clinics that I've been at.
Yeah.
And we've had people on stretchers having blood pressure checks and stuff, so I mean, it's just, I don't know if this is a requirement, or is this, I mean, I'm still, I mean, if you guys just.
Issues in other towns, and it was recommended.
All right, well, we need to know what the cost is for that one, right?
Well, so I, I've done some back of the napkin math here.
I'm sure you did.
So, if it's 1500, so item number one, contact tracing, 1500 times six, right, so we know what that number is.
That's clear, yeah.
To approve, EMS slash custodial and PD, PD has a four hour minimum, right, and I think it's about $50, I'm rounding here, so it's $200, until you have the PD over there, custodial or EMS, roughly for an EMT rounding numbers, an EMT at 23 and a paramedic, or no, paramedic at 23, and EMT at 20 would cost us for four hours, $180, and then a custodial at $20 an hour, and I'm assuming it's not overtime, but at $20 would be 160, so total for personnel would be $540, and then 40 hours, three hours bi-weekly for 26 additional weeks, is really three hours times 13.
I don't know that I'm, I'm ready to vote on that yet, we have not made any decisions on anything on ARPA yet, I'm gonna take it step at a time here.
The real figures.
You know, the vaccine clinic and the contact tracing is what, we were asked, that's what's on the agenda, and anything related to those things, I'm fine with, but I, I'm, I'm not ready to start looking at every, we're gonna have everybody, after we do this survey, we're gonna look at what we need to be spending.
And I think it's.
I'm sorry, I haven't made a motion, I just given a number.
All right, I just wanted to clarify what's on the agenda, there were two items for the agenda, the contact tracing and the vaccine clinic, so I wasn't looking at the whole six months of other wages and everything else for any department at this point in time, in my mind.
And I think it's, it's, I think it would be great to address the contact tracing and as well as the vaccine clinic on January 8th, since that's very, you know, very soon, but I think it's fine to, you know, of course, have additional conversation about the other topics.
We will get it, we're getting, get our survey out, we're gonna take a look and see what we've got, and lots of, lots of decisions.
First I'm hearing about the survey, so that's great.
But we haven't gotten the, the input that we want to have on that yet, so we will.
I'll make a motion to approve contact tracing through ARPA funds through the end of June.
Mm-hmm.
At 100, $1,500 a month.
Okay, we're gonna take these piecemeal?
Yes.
Okay, all right, could we have a second on that?
No second.
All right, any further discussion on the contact?
I'd like to modify the motion.
Go ahead, John.
That it is understood that any extension beyond June will be taken up through the budget process, and has to be addressed during the budget process, if you want to go past June 30th.
Okay, all right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to know if the Board of Health is getting updates regarding contact tracing, reports, the amount of people contract, traced, all that sort of thing.
Yes, weekly.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right, so with that, could we have a vote on the contact tracing part through June, with the amended motion, if anything beyond that, will be taken up in the budget process, could we have a second on that?
A second.
Or two seconds?
I don't know which one you want with.
All right, ready for a vote on that, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, that one passes, okay, could I have a motion for something related to the vaccine?
I'll make a motion to allocate 500 and, I'll round it, $600 of ARPA funds for the clinic on January 8th, to be utilized for, if needed, PD, EMS, and custodial services.
Okay, I would just ask that there'd be a breakdown for the Board of Health and for the Select Board, just because we are, we haven't even embarked on it, and looking at ARPA funds, so to then just, I'd just like to know where they're being spent.
And I guess to clarify my own motion, up to $600.
Yeah, yeah, John, John in his math on his envelope over here, someone would just verify that, but yeah.
I'll second that.
All right, good, okay, any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's.
Thank you.
Taking care, good, thanks, and we'll come back on other things later on as we start rolling out what we're gonna do with the ARPA money, okay? Good, thank you much, second presentation, Keith Workman, please. Thanks folks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, yes. Thank you.
Hi folks, John Workman, Belanger Road.
Yeah, you gotta speak up, John, we can hardly hear you there.
Yeah, the masks are terrible.
Yep.
Yep, John Workman, Fire Chief, Belanger Road, yeah, I would just, I was asked by the Select Board just to, to come through, we are in the process, have been in the process of trying to establish a permanent sign where we now have a temporary sign, just because it's worked out so well for getting information across to the public, we've used CARES funding up to this point, we're looking to move forward with or without the part of the sign that's in question tonight, the, the sign in, that we have there currently is an unlit sign with posters that get made by a resident of town, we're looking to make that a backlit sign with those same posters, and have them hanging, so we don't have to staple them in there, it's kind of a little bit haphazard, but it got us through when we needed to make some communications out to the, out to the public, the, one addition to the sign that I thought would be helpful as a role in, as EMD and with Fire Department, is to have some additional messaging that we could, electronic messaging that we could add to the sign, they have emergency boards that the Police Department has purchased, which have sort of a digital alphanumeric readout that we could use, the other thought was to use like a monitor, like a TV screen type addition, that you could change messaging on, wouldn't be movies, wouldn't be videos, it would just be static, pretty much static signs, it may do a, at best it would do a, like a slideshow with like a minute delay in between, I've talked to Police Department, there's no concern from Police Department as far as traffic concerns go in regards to that, I talked to the zoning appeals board, the zoning officer, zoning appeals board, there's a caveat that says that, that town government has, doesn't have to comply to some of the zoning, but it's, I think some of that is interpreted more for like construction type use, and isn't really necessarily for this use for, you know, emergency notifications for Fire Department messaging, it's not really, so I thought it seemed appropriate to bring it in front of the Board, to get the Board's input, whether the messaging that we're looking to add on would be appropriate for the, what we're looking to do, I've got a, I, I mocked together a couple of graphics, just in the general idea of what we're looking to go, I don't know if it'll be exactly what we end up with, only because monetary costs are pretty high, and I've got, there's some money for, in the safe, for public education that I can use for the sign, I'm also, would be looking to do probably some fundraising, or if we didn't do the monitor that we're looking, I might ask Ed if it was appropriate to use some of that money towards the purchase of materials for the sign to move forward the way it is now.
Just to be clear, John, you're, you're trying to use up the CARES money that we've already approved for you to do the sign, right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, but the, the, the kind of sign that maybe we were thinking, you're, you're making it a bit more elaborate, shall we say?
That's correct, yeah, a bit more elaborate, a little bit more flexible, it would also have the benefit of backup generator, so if we're trying to get emergency messaging out, the sign would, would either be the alphanumeric one that would be backed up with an emergency generator, so it would continue to run, or it would be the monitor style that I've also looked into.
So the banner would still be there, but there would.
The banner would still be there, this would be underneath about, I believe the alphanumeric signs are, I don't have their, off the top of my head, I want to say they're about four feet, the monitor is about five feet, by whatever TV monitors are, some of that's, sort of, green size, question?
I just want to clarify, because I think when we were talking about the CARES Act and the final like redistribution of the rest of it, since it's all due to be paid or spent by the end of this year.
Yep.
There were, how many signs have we purchased since this all started, and?
There's two.
So there's two of them?
Yep.
The Police Department, I think.
The Police Department has them.
The Police Department?
Yeah, and it was purchased by previous EMD.
They're movable signs, right?
They're movable signs, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so you're looking to.
Yeah, can I show you some pictures?
Do a different one?
No.
Can I show you pictures?
Not the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe just pass the photos around, yeah, so it's, it's a different than what, it's different than what the Police Department have already purchased, as my understanding.
I thought when we were, you know, redistributing it, the final one, that there was. I thought when we were, you know, redistributing it, the final one, that there was, the sign was taken off because we already had, like, so many?
There was a request for two signs, one for EMD, I think, and one for Fire, and we only approved one.
Oh, okay. That's, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
And I think the one question I have, I'll just jump in, because I.
Sure.
It's on my brain.
Please.
With the two that were already purchased for the Police Department, my understanding is they have not been used much yet because we didn't have funds for the subscription to somehow keep them running, whatever that entails to.
It's a thousand dollars a year.
To have that, but whatever that's.
Yeah. And my personal.
So, are these going to require, whatever you're talking about, is that going to require some level of subscription too? Because I just want to be cautious that as we look at new things, that we're not forgetting the ongoing costs that may, may appear that we don't think about, maybe.
Nope. Good question. Personally, this subscription hardly seems worth it. They offered it for free for that first year, and all it allows you to do is to do, do the signs remotely. There is a software, those are all different pictures, by the way.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about, sorry about that. I was hoping that we could project it.
Yeah.
That didn't quite work out, so.
It'll work on our technology.
We're going old school here.
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah. So, I'm not looking at any additional costs for, like, a yearly cost associated with any direction we go.
So, there's no subscription to this?
No. I don't, I don't, I don't think that's appropriate. Honestly, I think we may even look at that for the ones that we have. It would be an extra burden on us to go to each sign to program it, but that might be appropriate if we could save money.
What about any maintenance on it, you know, for warranty and services?
Yeah. That's a tough one, because warranty, warranties get expensive. So, you know, if you get an eight or a ten thousand dollar sign, which is crazy prices, yeah, those are the prices, they want to charge you fifteen hundred dollars for probably a four-year warranty. And if you're buying an outside durable sign, I'm a Yankee. It's hard for me to, to pay that extra money.
It's on warranty.
Yeah. Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, you hate to see it break. I guess you've got to sort of balance it. It's a cost that is difficult to absorb with the money that we have, is a possibility if you folks felt like that's the direction you wanted to go, but it would be over the estimates that I currently have.
So, could I just ask you, John? So, what do you think is safe, given where it's located and traffic? What do you think is the best public education thing we can do? Which one, you know, fits with zoning or not? Like, what do you think is what is the best thing for our town?
I actually, the biggest concern that I would have would be that if we set any sort of precedent, you know, I think if we, I mean, I think if the Board wanted to say we only use it if there's emergency messaging, I mean, that's something that you could say, and that would be fine. And I think that would be absolutely appropriate, because you'd be putting display on there that says, you know, vaccination clinic, or, you know, whatever, you know, snow emergency or voting today, well, maybe that's not an emergency, but, or, so you could have just emergency only. That's like something that you could say for it. I personally think it's kind of a neat idea that you could add sort of a graphic on there that you could change. So, if you wanted to do a CPR clinic, you could put that on a graphic, on a monitor, and it's just a matter of programming it, entering it. It doesn't cost anything, no yearly costs, you know, for the cost of these outside TV monitors. They seem to be durable, they certainly charge enough money for them. I've never owned one. I would assume it would be good and flexible. And I think that flexible, when you're trying to get out messaging, is a great thing. I think that generator backup is a great thing, you know, so that even if there's a power outage in town, you could get emergency messaging out. You can do that with the other signs that we have as well. This would be on top of what we already have.
How is this going to be protected from the weather?
Underneath Plexiglas.
Uh-huh. The whole, the whole thing and the banner?
Yeah. The banner would be one piece, the other sign would be another. The, the lower monitors by the picture would be another. Although it can't, the, the monitor and the road sign is, they are protect, theoretically, they stand up to weather.
They're an outdoor.
And they don't have to be protected.
They're an outdoor screen.
I just would, would prefer to probably protect them if we're going to make them permanent.
Well, wind would be a problem to our.
Yeah. I don't know, they're designed to be out there, but I do like the idea of taking some extra precautions with them, just because they're expensive and I like them to last for as long as we can.
I mean, I could see a windstorm and a rock coming in.
Wow. Yeah, yeah, you know, and.
Tree, that matters.
Yeah.
Plow truck.
Yeah.
John, would it be at the same place where the current sign is?
Yeah. Give or take a couple of feet.
Right of the fire station, but by the road?
Yeah. Pretty much where the sign is now, give or take a couple of feet.
And that's clearly being able to be seen coming north of Salt?
It would be coming from the Westfield side. It would only be, the, the sign in general with the banners would be visible as it is now from both sides. The proposal for the monitor or alphanumeric sign would just be visible if you're coming from Westfield towards East Hampton. It'd be one-sided. For one, it's because you've got to think about plows coming up the road, because plows are going to plow and kick off as they come up the hill, so better not to subject anything to that. And I think that there's more visibility as you come from the Westfield side.
So, it's on the opposite side of the street from where the traffic is directed?
The visible screen, yep.
Right?
Yeah. So, it would be.
The image would be, as you're driving.
Yeah.
You would see the image on this side of the road. If you were driving this way.
Exactly.
You'd see a brick wall. You wouldn't see the image.
Correct.
Right. So, it's the opposite side.
Yep. Correct.
You're only going to see the banner sign.
Yeah. You'd only see the banner sign.
Coming down the hill, you're only going to see the banner sign. If you're going up the hill, you're going to see both things, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's clear.
Chris?
Yes.
I may or may not have questions, but before I ask that, I'll ask you. What is your intent for us? Are you expecting us to act on something tonight?
Well, given that this is CARES money and today is the 21st, yes.
Okay. So, then, so my questions would be, is there has to be ongoing expenses, because you're going to have electricity out there.
Correct.
Right? So, that's going to add. And I know the infrastructure's already been done, right, to run out there. So, there's going to be something ongoing. Two, this is in the middle of the historic district, and it sounds like if we put an image up, we've really just authorized billboards. Three, coming down from the cemetery, traveling towards Westfield, when you hit the dip in the road, I counted in a tenth of a mile, that sign is number 12. So, boom, 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 you're hitting all these, I mean, it's like Sign Galore down there. And three, I understand the deadline to get this done by the, by the end of the year with the, with the.
CARES money.
CARES money. But, you know, perhaps it's a bigger conversation, maybe eliminating or doing something in conjunction with the Lions Club and eliminating that sign and putting them together, you know. And then four, aren't we talking about moving the public safety building, I mean, moving the Fire Department anyways?
Well, we don't know yet.
Well, I know, but I mean, these are all questions.
Yeah. But I mean, I, you know, I would.
So, I guess I.
I don't know that I'd put that in the equation in terms of waiting on that, but I mean.
Without seeing the final design.
Yeah.
I don't think I could vote to support anything.
I don't, I don't know what you mean by multiple signs. I mean, we've had a lot of signs out lately because of town meeting and all sorts of things.
No. If you just, just read all the traffic signs. If you're trying to pay attention and follow the rules of the road.
Yeah, there's a lot of signs.
Follow all these signs. It's boom, but there's, now granted, I think three of them are related to East Street. But there's, there's a blind curve ahead, there's the speed signs, then, then you have the banner itself, and I get that you're not going to see the TV, the TV, I mean, I would almost go, if we were going to, and I'm not saying we do this, is we go with a scroll that's constantly there, because I don't see the benefit of investing in this and having a blank screen and only using it in emergencies. Because then the comment's going to come back, oh, it's never turned out, it's never turned out. And then, I'm sorry, the last thing is, I'm not a fan of, because we're the government, we can do it, but everybody else's rules.
Yeah. No, that, definitely, there is a bylaw here that, you know, talks about signage in town, and this would maybe set a precedent, even though the government is exempt from this kind of signage.
Right. We make the rules. We don't have to follow.
Yeah. I agree. And that's why, that's why I'm here. And honestly, it makes my life easier, and I'm, you know, I mean, I know John's against it, and that's fine.
But I heard you say you went to the zone.
And that's not a problem at all. So, if you don't want to do it, I have no problem.
To be clear, I'm against it because I don't have a final image in front of me to say.
I understand, John, and there's not enough time for you to get that. So, I'd say if you don't, you know, you won't get that before the end of this year.
But you might be able to convince the others.
So, if you want to speak against it, then that's fine. I have no problem.
I think, I guess where I'm, I'm not clear on your question, John, because we're not talking about signage as you're coming down the hill. We're looking at this being in the Fire Department driveway area, right, as you're heading up the hill. So, when you're coming from the church.
I didn't count the signs coming that way.
I mean, from your house, close by, there's not as many signs in my head anyway, but I certainly haven't counted them.
No. But honestly, if I'm driving, I'm paying attention to my passenger side. That's where I'm looking at signs, right? Because those are signs that are warning me as the driver.
Right.
Not the signs on the other side of the street.
Well, and I guess, you know, if, what I thought I heard John say, that you checked already with the Police Department, and they didn't seem to think that would be a distraction to have that there?
That's correct. But I'd defer to John if he's got a concern.
Well, I think John raised a lot of good points. I do think it's a little bit like hurry up because it has to be bought before the end of the year. And I'm just wondering, you know, there's a lot of pride in our downtown in terms of the historic district and so forth. I was, I'm wondering whether or not you can use the temporary signs that we already have that the police aren't using and possibly put together a proposal for maybe the ARPA funds down the road, bringing the Historical Commission for, you know, like, an opinion about it. I just don't want to add a lot of flash and, you know, like, things blinking and things like that in our downtown. I just think it should be, like, thought out a little bit.
I have no problem with that. I've sat on historic boards in the past. I'm still a member of Historic in Belcher Town. You know, a lot of what we do is we save old houses.
Yeah.
So, that's the, the charge of the Fire Department. I have no problem. This makes my life easier if you want to vote it down. I just was trying to utilize the money in a, in a way that I thought was a good way to get messaging out. But I understand there are concerns, and I know that we're going to lose that money if we don't spend it, and perhaps you have a different way to spend it, and that's all good. Whichever way this Board decides to go, I'm happy with.
I think we agreed on, we already allocated from CARES. We allocated money for you to do signage there. So, with that fund, if, if this TV monitor screen thing was not approved tonight, how would you use that money?
I wouldn't use it. I don't have enough time.
You wouldn't use it at all?
That's correct.
So, there's eight to 10,000 that we're leaving on the table.
And what about the subscription?
What about for the signs that the Police Department bought and the fact that they can't utilize them as much because they haven't paid the subscription? Can we at least pay that?
We just approved the subscription money, though, in.
That was with the town meeting articles.
Okay. So, we did. All right. So, we're done with that.
We don't want to leave the money on the table, so hopefully there'd be an opportunity.
Yeah. You can buy another one for the Police Department if we can get it in time, but it has to be paid for by the 31st.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to take time with my family.
Yeah. Do we have to take possession of things by, I know we have to pay for them, but do we have to, they have to be physically here?
Yes, we do.
The other thing I just want to mention is, you know, we're talking about updating the Code Red program and a number of other things, and I think we have to be really, really careful about, you mentioned about we could decide that we only use it for emergencies. I don't think we want to dilute things to the point where people don't pay attention to it. So, that's the other thing I just wanted to mention, because I think with Code Red, we've been very careful to only use it for, you know, emergencies or important town events.
Yeah. I think over-information, it can be a problem.
Thing there that people just drive by and stop paying attention to because.
Sure.
They're used to seeing.
I think there's.
I think a little bit more thought should go into getting something that's electronic like that.
That's fine. I have no problem with that.
I also don't want to lose any money on the table and I'm wondering what we might be able to do about that.
That's up to you folks.
You've already mentioned that you've got electric hooked up there, so is the intent at least to?
Well, it still meets all the requirements. The sign with the banners would still meet the requirements with electricity to have it backlit with a white light.
That could be backlit and you would still want to enclose that in Plexi or something?
That's correct.
So that would be CARES money that you could use for?
Uh, no, I'm not looking to, because I couldn't spend it in time.
You couldn't finish it this?
I thought the electric was already hooked up.
The electric is there, so we spent the money for that.
Oh.
That's all set to go.
Okay.
We're moving forward, but there's not enough time in the CARES funding to do a bunch of research with Historic. I think all the questions you're asking are appropriate questions.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't see enough time to get it done. And I'd say, you know, maybe then, rather than trying to just spend money, we give it back to the government.
I'd rather re-allocate it to a different department in town.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Use it.
Sure.
Well, that's going to be a challenge too.
I know, but tonight's the night to do it.
10 days. Okay, do we have any further thoughts on this? I mean, I'm sensing that we're not in favor of this idea at this moment.
Do we have a dollar amount on that? Eight to 10 is a lot of variance.
No, it's 10,000 for the monitor, which we could get right away. The other alphanumeric signs are about $8,000 plus a little bit extra. I wouldn't want to get the subscription as we currently have if you want to go that way, but I don't know if we can get it in time. I think that's probably the biggest issue.
It took a while to get the alphanumeric ones that the police department ordered last time, right? And then they, and they were like around 9,000, I'm thinking, in the signs?
Probably with the subscription, huh?
Maybe, I'm forgetting, but.
My memory is, I think they were about 7,500 or 8,000 apiece.
Okay, maybe, yeah. I mean, those would be more likely to be on delay order to get in time at all, whereas, where would you get the screen that you?
Best Buy.
At Best Buy?
I already set up a tax-free account.
It's in stock, actually?
It's in stock.
Oh, Lord. Okay, well, what's anybody's pleasure? I need a motion on something here.
I guess I'm still unclear.
I am too.
Because a previous body has already approved something. Otherwise, we wouldn't have gone this far.
Right.
So is the only matter that's before us is for us to vote to create an exemption to the zoning?
The reason that, when John mentioned this, I asked that he come before us because I think we were all, we that were here at the time, were thinking of the signs like the Lions Club sign or like the police sign that was purchased. And this sounds like a very different thing, which could lead perhaps, even though we have the exemption in the zoning bylaw, as a government entity to do this, this could open up a little can of worms somewhere down the line. So I wanted to have the general sense of the select board and not just have John go ahead and do this without us knowing and expecting or being surprised when we saw whatever the sign showed up to be. So that's why I asked him to come before us tonight. Yes, Ed, sure.
And one of the reasons I brought this forward and wanted the select board to hear it is I'm not a big super fan of hanging my hat on the municipal exemption from zoning. Yes, we can put a school in a residential zone or a town hall in a residential zone for something like that. I understand why it's there. In this particular case, probably what popped out in my mind, because I've seen this in either other communities I've worked in or lived in, is the fact that currently we do not allow digital or electronic signage. So if the town were to say, go ahead and put a digital sign there and change it as many times as you want, or an electronic sign that basically might be a PowerPoint or a slideshow or whatever, our businesses aren't allowed to use those. So just keep in the front of your mind right now, or the back of your mind later on, that at some point, probably in the future, that's going to drive our businesses to look for those to be utilized, you know, by themselves. And it also does open up that wonderful piece of, yeah, we can't do it, but the town government can. So that's all I wanted to make you, you know, aware of. There are some, shall we say, maybe unforeseen consequences possibly down the road.
Because the current zoning bylaw would have to be changed if any of those businesses would ever want to do that, though. Because the current bylaw.
If the town wanted to allow that.
Right.
I mean, I have my own, I am not a big fan of digital signage. I think it takes away or adds to basically driver, you know, distraction or whatever. And like I said, and if you're in a huge community or maybe along a highway, I might be able to see, you know, the thought process in that. Right now in my, the town I live in, through a grant, whether it's a Safe Streets or Shared Streets, the town of West Springfield is actually adding two digital sign boards to the town common. I happen to find myself as an old Yankee and I think adding digital signage, especially to a town common, which to me is old New England, is not a good move. I'm appalled by it.
Yeah.
But that's me.
Yeah, okay. So just one piece of clarification and back to you. So for the money that you currently have, though, you're not able to get the Plexiglas to just at least enclose the current banner sign? Or you wouldn't want to do that anyway, no matter what?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to spend money on the temporary sign that I built out of somebody's wood that they had in their garage. I'd want to probably wait until we actually had a, I mean, I don't mind helping donate some of my time to build it. I used to be in that trade. You know, unless there's an objection to the sign in general, but there's, I don't see a viable way to spend that money. I don't want to spend it if the board doesn't feel comfortable with it. I think it just needs to be whatever, you know, decision the board feels comfortable with. I think that, you know, it is over and above zoning. Anybody who wanted a digital sign would have to come and talk to you. This is the first one. Does it set a precedent? To some degree it does, and so that's what you've got away. It's not my job to really decide that. That's why I'd much rather have you, because I'm perceived as a bad guy by enough folks and what we're looking to do.
When the original money was approved, was it your, so you were researching signs or was it?
No, when the original money was approved, it was for this, but I don't think the conception of it wasn't probably as clear as it could have been, only because it was still in the works in the design phase.
I agree with Ed. I think that it either needs more study, needs more town input, and if there aren't other ways of using this funding for FD, then I'd like to have a dollar amount. And when we get to the section under CARES Act, we try to not lose the money.
Okay. Do we need a motion on this or are we all generally not in favor of this proposal tonight?
I mean, again, just to be clear, you know, conceptually, I like the idea. I just, without a formal, here's the picture, here's the specs, I can't vote because I'm lacking the information. I get it, there's seven workdays left in the year. It's not going to happen that way, so I just.
Well, and I think your point too of talking maybe to the historical commission or anybody else might not be a bad idea either, which is not going to happen either, so.
We just heard in the library report about the hope in the future to have a sign that, I don't know if that would qualify, but certainly people can drive by and not have to come in to get information.
Okay, so let's have a motion on this, just to do it formally. Could I have a motion about this proposal for us tonight?
Just to clarify, sorry. All other expenses so far spent to date for, as far as you've gotten out there, have been submitted and paid?
That's correct.
So there's no outstanding bills?
That's correct.
A dollar amount?
So then I guess the motion would be to, whatever the remaining balance is, to make available for reappropriation?
To reallocate it to another department.
Right.
And I would second that.
Okay, and then also I would add maybe to continue researching this and see if there's something as we move forward with ARPA funds, maybe there's something appropriate in a few months when we've got more time to decide on this and really understand it better?
Yeah, because it, I do think it clearly, depending on how you utilize it, it clearly can fall under messaging and communication. We tied into whenever, well, we're never going to issue Amber Alerts, but, because it just won't happen. But tied into all those safeties and communications, there is a section under the ARPA to do it. You just need more time to come up with conceptual design.
Okay. All right, so hearing all that, could I have some?
I'll make a motion to reappropriate X, whatever X is.
I believe it was up to 10,000. Up to 10,000, I don't remember. It wasn't more than that, I'm sure, but you have to find the right amount. Okay. All the, any, could I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of holding off on this and re-appropriating the money originally sent toward the Fire Department EMD for signage under the CARES Act funds? To postpone that, to not act on this tonight, not approve this tonight, could we have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Would it be appropriate to do a couple of good and welfare things?
Sorry?
I have a couple of good and welfare things. Could I present those?
Sure, as we were moving to open time for the public, so why don't you take it under that?
Okay. So the Southampton Firefighters Association has reached out to Mayfield Fire Department in Kentucky to do what we can with a monetary contribution to help them replace equipment lost when a tornado destroyed their fire station. They had a bunch of their gear in the second story and it was whisked away. The Firefighters Association, the Firefighters Association is reaching out to the community through Facebook, encouraging donations of which 100% will go to their gear supplier as a credit, allowing Mayfield Fire Department the ability to choose equipment that fits their needs. If you have questions or would like to donate, please email sfd.firefighters@ssoc@gmail.com. It's a tax deductible organization. Captain Eline had reached out to the chief there. I'd emailed him as well. This looks like, we don't have a ton of resources with the association, but it seemed a good neighbor thing for the devastation that they had seen. And it'll be through our Facebook page if anyone is interested.
Could you give us the email again, sir?
Certainly, yeah. SFD.firefighters, with an S, assoc, A-S-S-O-C, at gmail dot com.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, thank you. And then the, three things. Santa event went really well. Just wanted to say thank you for John Richards, who owns the package store in Westfield, who is a resident of Southampton, who encouraged Santa to be there and did a wonderful job with kids. We had 60 kids, which was really, really pretty nice. It was hard to tell how many we would get, just given the current circumstance with pandemic. So that was nice and just wanted to thank him and that. Plus the group, Firefighters, they decorated the truck. We've been to a couple of parades now with, we've put lights in the truck and they've gotten a couple of trophies for that. So that's sort of fun. I also wanted to just say that I'm encouraged, since the town meeting voted for the fair wage increase for basic AMTs and paramedics, we have only Christmas Day time and New Year's night shift open and a couple of, you know, a couple hour gaps here and there, but really things are mostly covered. I did tell the members I'd put forth into trying to a retroactive pay for them that would go back to the day after the town meeting vote. But I believe the validation from the townspeople for the work they do inspired them to give the extra effort to pick up shifts. I'm really proud of the group. I really like to see calls covered by Southampton ambulance. I do lose sleep at night when we don't cover calls and it's tough, just given the current circumstances with lack of personnel. The money that's been appropriated is not a guarantee of perfect coverage, but it's a very good sign as we move forward covering all but a few calls that come in when our ambulances, all but a few calls that come in when our ambulances got a previous emergency 911 call. This is the level of service that the town deserves, especially during the holiday season. When, you know, mom or dad call for, with chest pains, a kid choking, someone with an overdose, I like to see our town respond with an ambulance and I'm proud of the folks that have stood up to do that. And I just want to say, really want to thank the public for coming out in regards to that. I also believe that there's going to be money at the end of the year left over from the money that was appropriated because it's only going to be spent on wages and it's just hard to tell, you know, how much that will be. But it does look encouraging that there will be some left over and going back into general fund. I can't guarantee, we needed to appropriate enough money so I didn't have to go back to the town because there wouldn't be opportunity for that. And I don't like to do that anyway, but I do believe that there'll be money that'll be going back to general fund. I have a lot of paperwork that's going to the PPV that's actually asking for more paperwork than has ever been requested, so I'm trying hard to get that to Personnel Policy Procedure Board, hopefully this week, because I'm trying to see my family at the end of this week, which is out of state. But I just wanted to share that positive news that we've really had people stepping up and I think that really is encouraging. I just wanted to thank the public.
Good, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, appreciate it, all right.
Thank you all.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. All right, have a nice holiday and do spend it with your family at some point. All right, we are still in open time for the public for the next maybe five minutes or so? Sir Robert? Yes?
Those are hard acts to follow. Robert Floyd, College Highway Town Moderator. I believe Southampton was in the house. Well done, thank you, Select Board, Ed, especially we worked well together. And people came out, 170. That's not too shabby in a pandemic. And there was a lot more that would have come out too if it wasn't for holidays and pandemic. So I believe our fears of worrying about a quorum in the future are over. Southampton seems committed. The people really were energetic. They participated, a lot of new faces. And I would strongly encourage you to reconsider to have a special town meeting before the annual. We can get this done. Let's not hold up anything that's important for the town and we don't have to worry about a quorum anymore. Any questions on the meeting?
No, I think it went well. I think we were, what, an hour and 15 minutes thereabouts?
Yeah.
And I think it went quite well. So, yeah, we had debate where we expected debate and other things went quite smoothly that seemed to be more administrative, housekeeping kinds of things, so. Great, no, thanks for your work on that and Carl's as well.
Thank you. Cheers.
Yep.
Thank you.
Very good, okay. All right. Anyone else for open time? If not, we're going to move on to the presentations and we're going to start with the library. Barbara?
So Johanna wanted me to, she's our children's librarian, to give you these flyers. I know you'll see it in the report.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
There's two different ones happening and one is an extra movie. Whoops, did somebody get killed first?
That's all right.
That's okay, we'll share. Okay.
Barbara Golden, Director, Edwards Public Library. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, so do you want me to stop at the end of paragraphs or the end of a category?
Well, you've got a very lengthy report here, Barbara, so I don't think you have to read it word for word. So if you want to just kind of summarize your different sections and the highlights, I mean, that's fine. We've had a chance to read it and I'm hoping if people have some questions, we'll, you know, we'll be able to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're very grateful that the article passed at the special town meeting. We're able to increase our hours and open on Mondays. We're having the boiler put in, thank you, Ed, for that, on Monday and Tuesday and maybe Wednesday. So Tuesday, the library is closed. And then we can start the new schedule Monday, January 3rd. Let's see, so I skipped some of the stuff in here, but as far as our goals, we're trying to keep the library going as normally as possible during the pandemic. People have been coming in, they've been pretty comfortable. We have Plexiglas and masks and hand sanitizer, so we've been providing programming inside now, but we have to be limited to five kids, for instance, during story hour by the, I talked to Jerry Swanson and get recommendations for that. When it's nicer weather, we've had it outside, we use the pavilion a lot and we can accommodate more families. So another goal right now is to increase the activity of the Friends of the Edwards Public Library. They haven't met in two years and we're finally going to meet on January 27th at 6:00 PM. Depending on the pandemic, it'll either be all Zoom or hybrid. And talk about the book sale. They didn't have a book sale. They usually, used to have it every spring. We do get a lot of funding from the Friends, shelving, things like that, so it's really an important part of the library as far as money going for things that are uncovered by our budget. So one thing, I went to a Zoom workshop and I'm looking into joining Overdrive Advantage and that's a program where we can increase our e-content, ebooks, e-audio. We can take the money out of our materials budget. So there's a general amount of ebooks and audiobooks available to all CW Mars libraries, but this is a way a particular library can add more content and for, I think it's about a month, it's only for our patrons and then it's shared. So I'm looking into that. Then it has been requested by a member of the, of our, one of our patrons, actually a trustee, that we look into mobile Wi-Fi hotspots to offer patrons. A lot of libraries have this. And there are internet access points that allow users to connect to a Wi-Fi network for people, for instance, who don't have Wi-Fi or for some reason. There are people using the computers in the library, but not as many as before. We also have Wi-Fi in the parking lots, so if you see a couple of cars out there at night, it could be what's happening. So that's something I'll look into as far as cost. So, you know, the next paragraph just describes our usual, you know, activities that we do to keep the collection going and customer service. We do, I wanted to point out that right now we're going to have five Hampshire Regional teens who are volunteering. We often have teens working off their time, you know, they're from high school. So we're continuing to take workshops and coordinating with CW Mars. That's ongoing. And then Johanna has a paragraph about what's happening in the youth department. So the flyers, we've had story time and we don't have to pay the storyteller because there's a Hampshire Regional School District Collaborative that actually pays for the storyteller and quite a few other things. And they've had to switch it from Wednesday to Tuesday morning because of the new storyteller. We have, and that's a pretty young crowd, you know, like two, three-year-olds around there. So partly because of the need in the community, Johanna is going to add this other story hour, story time, she calls it, for a slightly older group. And it would be with Cindy DeMond, who was a teacher in NARA school and used to be our storyteller. And it'll be more for reading readiness and so it'll be more four, five, six, seven. And she's already had a call from a homeschooling parent who's very excited about that. Johanna continues to do her monthly activities like the Valentine's Tea coming up.
Could I ask a question while you're, before you lose track? And just back on your hotspots, where would you think about adding them, given that there is?
They go out. They're like, you lend a laptop, you lend a hotspot. Yeah, we have Wi-Fi, people can come and use our Wi-Fi.
And I've seen people in the parking lot, as you mentioned, so.
No, this is, I actually have not seen one, but you actually lend them out. They have a barcode on them, like we lend out our ukulele, so it's kind of like that. So people take them home.
Okay.
Or if they're going on vacation or whatever, right, Jessica?
Okay, good, I did not know that, all right.
Have you seen one?
I haven't seen one, no.
No, but I know from the library listservs that a lot of libraries have been looking into it and getting them.
Okay, very good.
And it could be ARPA funding. It is infrastructure, you know?
And I was going to say, I think Kim Florrick would be a very good resource to you.
Oh, yes, right, from the high school.
Because I know that she's done a lot of things like that for the regional, because, believe it or not, towns outside Southampton have less internet access than what we do and so.
Yeah, they do.
She's done a good job with that, so there may be some tips she can give you.
Yeah, she would be a great resource. I'll have to get her information, maybe from Ed or.
So. Go ahead.
I had the, I did check with the Mass Board of Library Commissioners on the municipal appropriations requirement for FY '23 and it's $172,157. Last year's or this current year is 170,056. The difference is $2,101. So in order to get our accreditation, that's what we would need, that increase. I did contact the Mass Board of Library Commissioners the day after the special town meeting and they were very happy and they said as long as I sent the minutes, which I did, that we're right on track to be presented to the board in January like we would have been. We didn't lose any time because of, you know, the waiver application and we will be getting the checks on time. It's two checks that come in. And last year it was over $10,000 from the state. Johanna raises money for her, our programming is mostly covered by fundraising. It's not really, not much in the budget. So she writes to local organizations like East Hampton Savings Bank and many organizations, the Mother's Club, the Women's Club, and that's how we run our, especially our summer programs, but during the year too. And so she'll start doing that in April and then she's applied to the Cultural Council for kickoff, which is Birds of Prey. The theme for this summer is outdoor activities, so that's perfect for the pandemic.
Yeah, true.
Okay, personnel. So one of our nine-hour-a-week persons is only paid $14.57. She's worked three years there. The position is, you know, covers everything. This person is trained in all the circulation library duties. And in addition, this person does our Instagram account, does a lot of the flyers and researches historical and genealogical questions. So we would like to raise that, especially since the minimum is, what, $15 an hour? I don't know what year that's going into effect, but also the subs are only paid $13.77 an hour. They're all trained also and many of them have been with us for years. So I'm not sure if that'll happen this year, but that's a goal for us. And let's see, events for the next four to six months, the summer reading. Well, we do programming during the year. I'll be going to Hampton Reads Programming Planning pretty soon. That, that's a program that runs about every year and a half or two years and I meet with the other neighboring towns. It's called Hamptons because it's East Hampton, South Hampton, West Hampton, North Hampton, and it also includes Lily and Williamsburg. And it's fun to work with the other libraries. And we actually have been meeting regularly all through the pandemic and not talking about Hampton Reads, but talking about what to do during COVID. So it's been extremely helpful. Another thing we're looking into is displays and shelving. We have, some of our shelving is the mobile shelving, you know, with the DVDs and CDs. It's quite old. It's probably as old as the library, if not older, the older, you know, maybe 26 years or more. And one fell over recently. So we're seriously looking at more shelving and that'll probably be funded by the Friends. They have paid for quite a bit of shelving. So we know that Norris School Library is closed and Johanna has been talking to Principal Pluta. She was hoping to go into the school and actually, you know, do the library, but she wasn't allowed in because I think outside people weren't allowed in. I don't know if that's still the case. She talked to Principal Pluta about a Bookmobile, but none of those have worked so far, but she's still going to continue to see how she can help. She did make a flyer and attached an application for a library card that the principals distributed. Last year, when Patty Murray was there, we did institute this program called SORA, which is a reading app for students that's put out by Overdrive, which is what we use, the whole CW Mars system uses. It's still in place there as far as I know. And it connects Norris School Library catalog, their library catalog with CW Mars catalog. So the people, families at Norris can use the databases and all the e-materials, not the physical materials, but the e-materials. So Johanna will continue to work with them. And she usually, well, last year she did Zoom meetings with all the kids to talk about the summer reading program. She used to go in person to the school. And so she's, she's really pretty good about outreach. In the summer, because a lot of the emphasis outdoors, she's working with the Hampshire-Hampton Conservation District with an environmental component for the summer reading program. We've worked with them before and also with Audubon, Arcadia, especially since a lot of the programs are outdoors now. Let's see, long-term, the signage, we would like sign similar to the front, the one that's in the front of Norris School, where we can post hours and events and change them, but we haven't found the right sign yet. We found a sign, but the person isn't doing them right now. So the one that Norris had. So we're still looking and we would love to upgrade the library lighting. Certain sections are getting darker and less efficient. Johanna, thanks to CARES Act funding and Ed is getting her new laptop installed on January 12th. And she's written what the problems are that she has with her present one, which is the oldest one in the staff computers. And she would, she does want to upgrade the youth computers. And the public computers were donated by Francine in memory of her parents. They've been wonderful in 2014. So we probably have to upgrade those. And that's the report.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Barbara. How about some questions, anybody?
I just want to say it's, it's great that so many kids take advantage of the summer reading programs.
Yeah, that's great.
Right. She had about 200. We do an adult one too, but, you know, the big thrust is the children, families.
So the, just on terms of the story time, are you getting a large number of kids coming in for the story?
Well, we can only have five families. We had more when it was outside.
That's what I was wondering.
A lot more, yeah.
Yeah.
And now she's had like 40, 50 people at some of the events, you know, outside, but we're limited inside. And actually, on the listserv now, a lot of libraries are talking about whether they can even have anything inside. We are, but they're limited.
Okay, yeah. And then as you're talking about personnel and staffing updates, is this something that you're going to be going to PQB on or?
Well, I'll talk to. I'll talk to Ed and PQB.
And so forth?
Yeah.
For the next year's budget, if nothing else?
Right.
Okay. And then on the upgrading of lighting in the library, does that fall under our Green Communities grant at all?
Yes, it would.
It would, so.
Ed, you were going to look into it, I think, right? I mean, we talked about it.
Okay, so that might be a thought on that one. Again, the signage, if we knew that we had something available, that would be an interesting, you know.
Yeah, we haven't found what we need.
Anything in time is going to be.
And they're on a short time. The base of the two wooden posts are rotten. So it's not going to be long before that one actually comes down.
Yeah, it's in bad shape.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I understand. But I mean, to be able to reallocate, for example, tonight, money toward signage there without having.
Wouldn't fit.
No.
It's not going to work because we don't have the timing to do it.
It's not the timing. It doesn't fit. It's not a COVID message.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha. Okay, so that's got to be a different thing altogether. All right, never mind that.
Any other questions?
Okay, nope. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Barbara.
All right. And thanks for getting it to us ahead of time so we had a chance to read through it. All right, next, Council on Aging. Joan.
Good evening, Joan Linehan, Council on Aging Director. I want to publicly thank Janet Kane, our Advisory Board Chair, who helped to prepare this outline and is always there to lead our group together. Our current priorities are filling a temporary opening, which has been open since the end of September for administrative assistant. While we're working on a new program coordinator job description, which needs to be scored by the PPPB and also recruit for this position. We do have a current candidate. I believe the two weeks are up for the posting and so we're hoping to hire her in, in the near future. Our Memory Cafe is our new exciting activity. We've had three so far. It's a monthly, Thursday of the month. We got a grant from Highland Valley. And we are partnering with Golden Moments, which is a day, Adult Day Health. And it's also trying to attract other folks from our area. And we were able to have two couples that came from Southampton in our past, last week's program. About 16 to 20 people are attending. Very worthwhile. If you saw the newsletter, it involves socializing and music and all kinds of therapy and a really great program. Our budget spending, we're, because of the vacancy, we're, you know, we're doing okay with our budget. We do have a State Formula Grant funding that helps with our volunteer coordinator and will also help with the new program coordinator. We also have an art class and Tai Chi. And during the pandemic, we were using the Zoom line dancing and chair yoga and things that we could do on Zoom through, through our Formula Grant. And now we have a technology assistant who supports the seniors and it's covered by the CARES Grant. And there was $1,000 set aside for that purpose. And she's seen at least a dozen people, sometimes, you know, several times. Our FERTA grant runs about 28,000. Our transportation has not picked up since it was last year for the pandemic, but we still are able to have daily trips to shopping and medical appointments. And we did take a trip to Bright Knights and we had 11 people that enjoyed that last Monday. The CARES Grant has allowed us to do shelf-ready food. We did a grocery giveaway. We did meals through the drive-through restaurant, Good Eats To Go. We also have a new awning that was really a wonderful asset during the outside months when we couldn't come into the center and we used it after that in the summer as well. And I talked about the new technology program. So personnel and staffing, as I said, we're down one person, but hoping to fill that position for, temporarily, until we can get a new position, which we are looking at to be 14 hours a week, which would be a four-hour increase. And it would take in new responsibilities for programming and assisting with, especially the program for the Memory Cafe. We have down, we have two van drivers at this time. We did have three as a backup. So we're looking to hire possibly one more backup and have them trained so they're ready to drive as needed. Our volunteer coordinator has been there the longest. I think it's about seven or eight years. And she's a great asset. She knows many people in the community and she's the current clerk for the Friends of the Senior Center. And I would like to make, especially mention the Friends of the Council on Aging because without them, we couldn't do what we do, even through funding and volunteering. They're really, with a department of three people or four people, you really can't do any, everything you need to do without the volunteers. The Senior Tax Work Off Program actually was very timely this year and people worked many hours in the senior center, helping answer phones and scheduling rides. And the current person that we're looking at for that position is all, is trained. She's been doing that job for two months. So the next step is to talk about long-term issues, but this is the plans and events for the next four, six months. We're going to visit multiple senior centers. I know they already visited Hadley and especially centers that have been built in the last five years. We have to develop a needs assessment tool to see what our community really wants in, in a new center. Participate in, I myself would be part of this committee that we're going to form. We've had, we've met a couple of times informally. We like to create more intergenerational activities with Norris School and the Hampshire Regional. That was actually one of our programs that we did on Zoom was with the students. Make sure that the newsletter has some quality articles, new and interesting, to benefit our over 60 population. The greatest thing that's happened to, I believe, Southampton in the last couple of years was the pickleball group, who have now have their own court through the Conservation and the Park Commission. And it should be opened in the spring. So that's a wonderful active group. And I can't wait to see it expand and become even more active. And that would be intergenerational as well. So people may or may not know, I know the Select Board knows, that we were fortunate to get a donation from the estate of David Parsons for the Council on Aging to develop and plan a new senior center. And that, that money is designated just for that. So we are very excited and interested in making that happen. So we need to determine whether we're going to buy property, reuse an existing building, get a land donation, the size of the facility, the needs of the community, and how to support it moving forward. Our transportation is not able to support the growing numbers of seniors. At, at this time, we would, I'd love to see another piece of transportation, you know, a smaller vehicle that we could have, maybe thinking about in the future. Adding new programs to, to the facility we already have and limited hours is difficult. The staffing requirements caught, considered number of calls per week and number of activities. So we're getting hundreds of calls a month for all, for many things. We'd like to increase the homebound and outreach to seniors to the shut-ins. I know we're already working with police and fire and Highland Valley and the Southampton Congregational Church to, to identify people that really need to be checked in on and have wellness checks. Housing is huge. I know Janet is part of the housing and I heard the chair of that too. And the housing is, it really is so important. Many of our seniors who are very active in our center had to move to other communities because there isn't subsidized housing or appropriate housing. Once they have a house and they're down to a single income, they can't afford to stay in Southampton. So I think looking at housing and availability for housing is so important. And we'd like to, you know, maybe get more things going, more events going. Once the pandemic settles down, I know we're having an uptick, so probably not the time to be thinking about increasing things, but we'd like to go back to some of the things that we were doing initially. The friendly, the AARP age-friendly community and also the dementia-friendly community, they have different things that are important. One of them's walkability. And I know at the town meeting, they, they passed the bike path and extending that. And that's going to be a, a big asset to our walking group, which has been active since I've been here, I know. And we have, we'd like to see more use of outdoor space and other activities. I'd like to mention the UMass nursing students that are going to start in February. And it's part of the nursing program. They do community assessments and they'll be working at the Council on Aging every Wednesday. And I think my last part has to do with suggested tools and resources to help our job and our cost efficiency. So we network a lot with the Massachusetts Council on Aging, which is situated right here in East Hampton, other senior centers and their directors, trying to get best practices and to compare things. Each community is so different, but there are a lot of similarities as well. We work with the Triad Group. We recently, with the fire and the police and the Sheriff's Department, were able to, in fact, today I brought out a bucket of sand to about 22 people, so 22 households. And again, I wanted to mention the Council on Aging Board, who has been so supportive. And we meet monthly and they help with a lot of decision-making and trying to make us a very prominent place in, in Southampton and important issues that have to do with people 60 and over. And I hope we're there for people that, that need us. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Questions, anybody?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I mean, looking at your budget spending status and realizing that from the town, the Council on Aging is getting slightly more than $40,000 a year and everything else is from outside funding sources.
It's hard to believe, I know.
Point 0.01% of the town budget.
And the population.
And I didn't. I'm just, do the math. Okay.
And the senior population is a third. So it, yeah, it is disproportionate.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, we have, we're fortunate to have many volunteers to keep us going.
And we're grateful for that because that keeps, that keeps it going.
While we're sort of on that subject, in that paragraph, Joan, you were talking about working from last year's budget under the State Formula Grant and you mentioned $14,496. So that's last year's grant. So when does that finish?
So it was to finish July 1st. They did carry it over. And, and then we were supposed to get a new figure because of the new census. So every 10 years, they give us, you know, whatever, eight or 10 or $12 per senior. So depending on the town census, that's how we get our funding. But because I think everything is waylaid and the census, I'm not sure how, you know, how correct it is, but they gave us the same amount as last year.
So you have your new Formula Grant going, or you're still finishing?
But we're keeping the same amount. So we start, as of, yeah, as of now, or it would have been July 1st. When we had a carryover, I think it was of.
I don't know what it was.
Yeah, we did have a carryover.
Correct, yeah, from the state, though, that has to be signed by Select Board.
Yeah, because I was saying, we haven't, I was thinking there must be something we have to sign and I haven't seen anything.
Everything is waylaid because usually it's like August or September.
Okay.
And here it is December, so.
Okay. But, so you're still working on the money that you had been granted and you're, you're not running out of money with the State Formula Grant and you're expecting a new?
Right. And I think we can negative spend it. We, we do get it back eventually once the sign, its contract is signed and all. But it's all over the state. It's not just us.
Yeah, okay. All right. I just wanted to be sure that we weren't missing something that we had to sign off on that we lost track of. Yeah, we need anything?
With the hiring and training of a new van driver, I know we have to keep the hours down on the ones that we have. Does that come out of the $28,000? Down 28, yeah, the,
The FERTA grant?
FERTA money. Like, because you have to get additional license and training and stuff. Do they expect that we have to take that out? stuff. Do they expect that we have to take that out of the $28,000?
So that all comes from the FERTA grant.
Okay, so if we have to hire somebody new, that'll be taken out of the $28,000. That'll impact the rides available, right?
That's correct, and all the training and everything that goes, goes through their grant. But we haven't used it as much as we have in the past. One year, we had to ask friends for, you know, to help us to pay for the rest of it. So it's a different world right now.
Yeah. But, you know, I think, I hope they don't use what's used and base it for the future, because I think it used to be more than $28,000. So...
It was. It was 30.
31. I hope they don't, you know, base the need based on COVID world.
Well, I know. They're trying to be fair throughout the, you know, the Hampshire County.
So you've got two drivers now, but you're looking to hire a backup, a substitute backup kind of person, a third. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. Anybody else? Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Appreciate it. All right. All right. Let's jump to the next one who I see in the audience. How about Ron? Could we have the tree warden come up, please?
So my report's probably, probably not quite as long as Joan's. I fill out my 15-minute slot. Introduce myself. I'm Ron Lauren. I've been the warden in town for seven years now. Every year's an election year for me, so basically I've won seven elections so far.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I did give you guys a handout. Basically, it explains the position of tree warding, so you can read that at your leisure, or we can go through it as well. It's kind of a unique position, and I'm not sure if everybody fully understands what the tree warden does.
It was so helpful.
Yeah, no, it was useful, and very useful.
I'll start with the, I have a little outline here. So I'll start with my primary function. Basically, this is a day-to-day function. It could be any day, really. What I do is I respond to citizen calls for hazardous trees. There's quite a few. I also get calls from the different department heads or whatever, Randall, or Police Department, Fire Department. People just driving through town will call, so if they see a tree that, you know, appears to be hazardous, we try to address it.
Ron, could you just move your mic over a little bit? I'm not sure if that is picking up. Good, thank you.
There we go. So then what I do when I get a call is I go out and I assess the tree and try to make a determination whether or not it has to be immediately removed, or it can go on a list, which I generate throughout the year. You know, if it ends up on the list, we try to get to it. They're usually the less hazardous trees, but if there's money left in the budget at the end of the year, we'll try to, try to get those trees as well. So that's my primary function is tree warden. And then, and then the other capacity that I serve in, which is through tree warden, is when we have a storm, basically storm response. What we do when we, whether it's a snowstorm, ice storm, windstorm, or whatever, we kind of set up a command center in the police department, and that includes me and the police dispatch gets involved, emergency preparedness director, Randall is, you know, Highway Department, and we kind of just drive around town and deal with the disasters as they, as they come at us. I'm also in contact with Eversource. We got representatives that, you know, we're in contact with during these storms, so they'll dispatch their tree companies, which is usually Asplin Tree or Northern Tree will respond as well in that situation where it's an emergency. I have a tree company that does pretty much all of, you know, most of the work in Southampton. Some, my tree company will be, not my tree company, but the tree company that does Southampton's work, they'll also be on call, and they, generally speaking, they'll always respond to Southampton first. So that's, that's kind of, that's kind of what we're doing during an emergency storm situation.
Could you just clarify which, which tree company you use now currently?
K&amp;J Tree Service in town. They've always treated Southampton pretty, you know, as far as responding and stuff, they've always been, been right there. So, so, yeah, that's generally, like I said, during an emergency storm situation. And the other capacity that I get involved in throughout the year is, I know that you've probably seen over the last couple of years, Northern Tree has been in town. They've removed quite a few trees. That's done through funding. Eversource provides the funding. I assume that it must be, you know, part of our electric bill or whatever, but anyway. Eversource hires Northern. In the last couple of years, they've removed about 2,000 trees in Southampton. Not all of them were town trees. A lot of them were on private property as well, but, you know, it's a huge, huge asset for us. Those 2,000 trees, they're unfortunately, they're only on one side of the road. Usually, they're on the side of the, with the power lines. So, but anyway, that's, that's a huge asset. They, actually, I just spoke with one of, one of my contacts today, actually with Northern Tree, and they're going to be starting up a little bit of basically light takedown. They got a few more areas that are, that still need to be addressed. Foma Road is one of them, so you're going to probably see them in the next couple of months, removing some more trees. Let's see. So when we, we get involved with these tree companies, as the warden, I have to go through, they'll, they'll generate a list with their arborists, and me and the arborist will review the list, and then I'll go out and I'll assess the trees that are on the list and make sure that they are dead, dying, or diseased, or otherwise compromised. You know, so I go through the list with them. We make the determination that they, that they should be removed, and then they're, they're added to the list. So it's kind of an extensive process, but it works. Luckily, in the last year or so, we haven't had any major weather activities. I mean, you know, luckily, we've had a few microbursts in the last couple of years. We're still dealing with the, you know, the effects of those, those microbursts that came through, and a few other wind activities really destroyed a lot of the trees. They also hit the hiking trails in that area. So I know Conservation's been doing some, some stuff out there and trying to clean that up, but that's a big undertaking. So that pretty much sums up the, that. And then, one other thing I just wanted to talk about is association participation. Last couple of years, I haven't, we haven't been part of the Tree Wardens Association. You know, some of it has to do with budget. The other issue is the pandemic. I mean, they haven't really been meeting. So I'd like to start resuming that, which basically means going once a month to a meeting and talking to the other wardens throughout the Western Mass, and, you know, we bounce, bounce ideas off of each other. And then we also get, UMass and DCR sends people, too, to these meetings, so there's, you know, some good resources available. The thing that we talk about, like Emerald Ash Bore, for example, that's, that's, that's an issue, that's a concern. If you don't know about it, I actually presented a handout as well on that. So it's killing our ash trees. Most of them are dead already, unfortunately, so wasn't much we could do to save them. Another area that I've tried in the past, I may try again, is to get involved with the CPA funds as far as tree preservation and the historical sections of town. I've gone before to CP, the Community Preservation Committee before and tried to present it in, you know, in a way that it would fit into the historical housing component. And last time I did present, it was rejected, unfortunately. They couldn't seem to fit that into their capacity. So we'll try again. It would be good to be able to get some, some of that funding, because then, you know, we got a lot of historical trees, like on East Street, for example, all those big maple trees. Most of them are dying, and, you know, it'd be nice to be able to replace those, at least. So that's about it as far as what I do and the, and the activities throughout the year. Year-to-date activities, as far as tree removals, we had a couple large maple trees, one large oak tree on Palmero Meadow that got removed, two large maples, and three trees, which was caused by storm damage on East Street so far, and then one large tree out on Helen Drive that was removed. That, so far, I don't have anything else scheduled, because that was an issue with my budget. I was kind of getting towards the end of it. Luckily, the last town meeting, the town voted to appropriate additional funding, so that's gonna, that's gonna be good, because I'm going to use that to get rid of some more of the, the big dead maple trees on East Street, which are very expensive. So that's it for my handout. Again, I got the, what is a tree warden? You guys can read this if you want. If you've got any questions, I can certainly answer them for you.
Maybe just for the, for the folks that are watching that don't have the benefit of the handout, just refresh our, everybody's money, minds about the trees that you're focusing on. It's public property trees, not, not private property?
Yeah, it's all, it's all trees within, within the green belt, which is, sometimes that's hard to define. It could be 10 feet in from the edge of the road. It could be five feet in. Like I said, it's hard to define it sometimes because the road moves around. Randall has some, some maps in the Highway Department that we utilize to try to pinpoint the location. The other obvious is if we can find property pins, which aren't always readily available. But any, yeah, any trees on, you know, on the other side of the pin are Southampton's trees. So, so we deal with those trees, and then also, you know, trees out in the park and stuff like that, too, fall within the jurisdiction of the tree wardens.
I think I read, though, that the trees along a public highway do not fall in...
Correct, yeah. That's state, that's state jurisdiction. So everything on Route 10 is covered by the state. The Mass Highway covers that.
And if there were to be a tree planting program of some sort, do you have a source of getting trees to, to start planting, and where, where might that be?
I've done a little bit in the past. The American Arbor Association has a tree, tree planting program, and they'll provide trees, you know, at a cost. But those trees were very small. I mean, they were, I think I ordered about 100 of them at one point and handed them out at one of the town meetings or something. And like I said, they're not very big trees. If, you know, if we could get involved with some additional fundings, we could probably get some bigger maple trees and something to replace, you know, especially in, you know, historical areas in town. But, you know, right now with the budget, the way it is, it's just everything's, I mean, I hate to say, but it really is like a triage situation. We have to determine which trees are the most, you know, the most dangerous, and those are the ones that get removed. Yeah.
Okay, good. Other questions?
I imagine you must have reporting to the states, since it was a state. Do they, do you have to report, like, what your activities or anything about certain trees or anything?
No, actually, no. I don't, I don't answer the state. It's more of a, you know, it's more of a town, it's a town position. It's a town mandate. It's a mandate from the state that each town has a tree warden, but, you know, I just, I just report to the town, so.
I would imagine with all the focus on climate resilience and all of that, that they would be funding for trees. You know, that would be a great sort of voluntary thing.
Yeah, I mean, our trees are in rough, rough shape. I mean, we got a lot of very mature trees, and also like the maple trees. I don't, I don't think they're, they're very sensitive. A little bit of change in the climate or whatever, and then, and they don't do well. Road salt, I mean, that destroys them. I mean, there's a lot of stuff working against them, so.
Yeah. It'd be a great initiative, I'm sure. Families might, you know, donate.
You know, even like the ash trees. I mean, that, there's a major, major disaster, and, you know, maybe there is some grant monies out there to go after, you know, just trying to clean them up. I don't know. If, if I get involved in the association again, I'm sure that there's, you know, there's bigger, bigger towns that participate. Northampton or Amherst, you know, they have, they have better resources, so.
Ron, since I've been here, your basic budget, and yes, it's had amendments to it for a couple of years, but your basic budget's been $8,000. I would like you to enlighten us as to how not far that goes, and I'm going to do it this way. Because since I've been here, there's been a number of trees you have taken down on East Street and this short part between here and the police station. So you just had K&amp;J take one down maybe about four weeks ago. I know it's a good-sized tree, but would you please tell us what that cost to take down?
About, I didn't, I haven't broken, I didn't break it down. About $1,200. So, so an $8,000 budget will cover six or seven, or, you know, at best, eight trees a year. Like I said, we're very fortunate that Eversource has, you know, done as much as they have. So, you know, the cost has definitely gone up. It's gone up quite a bit, and it's, and I'm sure it's going to continue to go up. I mean, as everything else does, whether, you know, so it is what it is.
Do you actually have a contract with K&amp;J, or do they just, they're on call?
They're on call, exactly. So, yeah, we're not, we're not, the budget's not big enough to really have a contract for what we have. I mean, they do that with bigger cities and stuff, they will. It'll go out the bid, but you're, you're looking at budgets of 30, 40, or $50,000 a year, so.
We're trying to get there as much as we can.
Yeah, I mean, exactly.
Bump around, we kind of clean it up.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, it is a collaboration, certainly between, you know, the Highway Department and me and everybody else. We all kind of work together, and that's what we do, so get it done.
Great. Well, great. Well, thanks for coming.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate hearing from you directly and understanding the problem.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Very much appreciate it. Okay, we have our last report, which is from the Veterans' Service Office, the Veterans Services Department.
And Jerry was here at the beginning of the meeting, but he is gone now, so I don't know where he got to.
Maybe, I don't know. Does anybody have, we've got a written thing. Does anybody have any questions about that? Just take a look at it. Just noting that there are currently two active cases, I guess, of veterans that Jerry's involved with. These are people that are enrolled in the, in the program and receive monthly benefits. And there has been, I guess the only question I really had on this was, you mentioned something about $20,000 allocated from the state, I believe, for the Veterans Services Benefits Program this fiscal year, and about 7,800 or some nearly 8,000 maybe used to date. But do we tend to normally use that full, full allocation for the year?
That's our budget. It's not the state. So it really depends on how many are receiving benefits. Right now, there are two. There may be some additionals that we have to add this particular year. I believe, I'd have to go back and look, but I believe there were some monies left in that budget at the end of fiscal year '21. We do receive 66% reimbursement from the state in the following fiscal year for what is spent on veterans' benefits.
There have been years when it was left over. We had to be very, very clear that this was not cutting the budget from the veterans.
Okay.
It all had to do with how much was used.
Okay.
But I can remember at least a couple of occasions where they, it wasn't used to its full.
Yeah, okay. And then if it's not, then that money comes back to the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Any questions on what we've been given here?
But, I mean, it offers a lot of valuable services and information to veterans who are qualified. I think it's great.
Yeah, good report.
Yeah, Jerry works very hard at supporting our veterans and helping their needs.
Yeah. No, he's cited here a couple of the programs, federal programs and benefits, the dependency and indemnity compensation program, which is a tax-free monthly benefit to eligible survivors or military service members who die in the line of duty, and then other service-related disabilities as well. So it sounds like there's programs that, they're out there available, and hopefully any residents that need so know how to contact Jerry, and will get in touch with him to take advantage of that. So thanks for that information, and we understand he's probably not hanging in for us. We're moving a little slowly here. We'll see if we can pick up some time here.
Do we have any idea how many veterans we have in town?
Jerry would have to answer that one. And I can ask him if he can show up at the next meeting and give his oral report.
Maybe you could commit open time to the public and just finish off his, you know, thing at that point in time or something. That would be great. Yeah, it'd be good to know just how many veterans we may have in town. Good, all right. So moving on, we have, thanks for all the quarterly reports, everyone. Very informative, very thorough. We will move on to appointments and resignations, and we have one... Um, we will move on to appointments and resignations and we have one appointment. Uh, this is for, uh, Charlie Kaneki, appointment to the Capitol Committee. He had term to expire June 30th, 2024. And we have, um, both the, uh, a brief, uh, email note that he had sent to me as well as his, um, volunteer application form filled out. So, any, anyone like to make a motion on this one? So, we have, this is the only, uh, only appointment we have tonight. Anyone? No one? To make an appointment? No?
Well, I mean, I'll make a motion to, to appoint him. I mean, the, there's a, there's an opening on finance, on Capitol Committee, which to date has yet to meet this fiscal year for the record.
Right.
Even though they have a quorum and could meet, um, there's an open seat.
They do actually have a quorum right now?
He.
Yes.
I believe so.
Yeah, there's, it's a five-member committee. There are four current members.
Okay.
One vacancy.
Okay. So, I'm not necessarily hearing a motion or am I?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have motion and a second then. John made the motion. Francine second. Do we have some discussion on this?
Well, I mentioned last time, I think that, um, getting on, requesting Capitol at the same time requesting a building committee. I think, I just think there should be a little bit more separation, like to get some new blood on Capitol. Um, some, maybe some younger people. I would feel the same way about Greenway Building Committee or Senior Center Building Committee. I just think that a lot of decisions are made around capital expenses and there's a bylaw that says finance people and not allowed to be on any other committee. And I would really hope that bylaws might look at that, you know, as well. So, I, I don't really feel like I can support it.
Who, I just clarify, because I, I don't necessarily disagree with that statement, but I also cannot recall all four of the other members and if there's already an existing conflict that would mirror that.
On Capitol?
Yeah. So, I know it's myself.
Margaret Larson?
It's Margaret, myself.
Existing conflict.
Oh. Yes, go ahead, Ed.
I'm gonna say this. I don't necessarily disagree with Maureen's statement. Uh, however, I'm gonna say this. The current members of the Capitol Committee are John Lumbra, who is Chair of the School Committee, Francine Tishman, who is Chair of the Council on.
No, it's not. It's, it's.
I mean, excuse me. I did it again. I did it again.
It's the mayor's.
Okay. It's Janet Kane, who is Chair of the COA Board. It is Margaret Larson, who is Chair of the Hampshire Regional School Committee. Uh, and then it's Sharon Hart.
Right. They're not on a school building committee. They're not on a Greenway Building Committee. They're not on a Senior Center Building Committee. That's the distinction that I'm making here. I just think that the, the interest in getting on both of these committees at the same time, and I'll challenge a little bit more and just say that there's too much of join a committee, quit a committee, join a committee, quit a committee. And I'd like to open Capitol up to some addition, you know, somebody that, uh, you know, I'd just like to, uh, have a little bit more distance between a building committee and someone on Capitol.
Okay. Any further thoughts, discussion? All right. Are we ready to take?
I withdraw my motion. I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Motion is withdrawn. So.
Are we, is the issue, are we, do we want to hear from the Capitol Committee on this, on this application? Their opinion on it?
I don't know if we oftentimes have the committees come in themselves, the chairs come in. Do we, Ed? I don't know. Give me a thought on procedure here. I'm not sure. I don't recall.
Don't we usually?
It's a select board appointed committee.
Don't we usually get a recommendation from a board or commission on an application?
We haven't had too many lately that I can think of. That's what I'm trying to remember.
Okay.
It's not a requirement, I don't think. Oftentimes, people show up, but it's not a requirement to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think Joy's right when it's an elected body and we're being asked to confirm it. This is a full appointment though, right?
Correct.
Like when, when there's a vacancy on the school committee, the school committee makes a recommendation to the select board.
Right.
But in this case, because this board is fully appointed.
Right.
It doesn't go to that committee first.
Correct. Right. That, that is.
Not based on their recommendation.
Yeah. Right. Right. That has been, that's been the process.
Yeah, good point.
That is true. So, yeah, there is no, no, no necessary need for, for anybody to come from Capitol Committee to make a.
Because it's not an elected committee.
Recommendation on this. Okay. So, at this point, I'm not hearing a motion. So, this is passed over? Is that the right terminology?
I don't.
Well, no action.
No action.
I mean, I don't have a, I don't like leaving positions open either. Um.
But as John said, we do have a quorum apparently, so they could meet. We're not, I think we, we definitely don't want to leave the committee without the ability to meet, especially a Capitol Committee that's gonna be crucial for us in the coming, coming months as we enter budget season for sure.
So, they do have a quorum?
That's what I'm hearing. Yes. Ed named the four people, right?
Correct.
So, was it ever brought up as an issue? Because he did serve on the Public Safety Committee before and Capitol Committee before, correct?
And he's been reappointed to Public Safety.
Was that ever an issue before? Has that ever brought, did anyone see that there was a conflict there then?
I'm speaking about my opinion right now.
Okay. I'm just wondering if there was a.
I don't know.
A past issue or anything.
But he has been appointed to the Public Safety Building Committee. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll be clear. I mean, I, I think that there's gonna be another issue if there's a, a building committee for the Council on Aging, and I feel the same way. So, it's not, I'm just not targeting Public Safety here. I think that it's, I just, I just, I've been on Hampshire Regional Building Committee and I think that it caused problems when there are people that run Capitol. How you, how can you not support, you know, it's mu, it's big money. It's money over, you know, $5,000. And I just think that it matters a lot. Right now, we just have a lot of money that has to be distributed and I just want objectivity. That's all. Okay. I'm hearing that we're taking no action on this. Let's move on. Reports, Town Administrator.
Let me just do this, because I think there's. All right. Uh, we have requested and received approval from the Mass DOT Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Program for an extension to the deadline for construction of the College Highway Sidewalk between Pomeroy Meadow Road and High Street. The extended deadline to complete this project is now June 1st, 2022. Uh, and as a side note, we are still waiting for our access permit for Mass DOT at this point. Uh, we received notification today from the Realtor who is handling the sale of the property at 217 College Highway, that they have accepted what was a pending offer on this property. The Select Board had asked me to reach out for some preliminary information on this property, which was for sale in case it might be anything that would be able to be used for affordable housing or other town purposes. Uh, the Edwards Library Boiler is currently scheduled to be replaced next week on December 27th, 28th, and 29th, unless there was a severe dip in, uh, the temperatures. The Highway Department F-550 Dump Truck with Plow and Seinder, which was approved for borrowing at the October 2020. Special Town Meeting has been delivered to the Highway Department and Randall is guarding it very closely. I have reached out to Eric Kinsherf, letting him know that the Select Board has voted to have his firm start the work on the fiscal year 2021 financial books at the beginning of January. I am waiting to hear back from him on the details to set up the lines of communication and for him to have access to soft write and also permission to enter information into the Department of Local Services Gateway Portal for the town of Southampton. Let's see. I also contacted the state in regard to requesting an extension to the deadline for the Conservation Commission Mass Trails Grant for Phase 1 of the Manhand Meadow Sanctuary Trail Restoration. I spoke with Amanda Lewis, who let me know that they were not accepting requests for extension at this point. Um, but as the deadline for this grant gets closer, they would be accepting requests for extensions starting in September of 2022. I explained to Amanda what the issues we have run into were and she thanked me for passing that along at this point in time and said that if, as we approach September of next year, and it still looks like we will not be able to complete this project in time, to reach out to her again in September. At last night's Conservation Commission meeting, the Commission voted to rescind their award of the bid for this project and to rewrite the specifications and put it out to bid again. The governor had his official award ceremony this afternoon for the Compact IT Grant, which Southampton received approximately $51,000 from. John Lumbra and Kim Florak from the Ad Hoc Technology Committee were representing Southampton at this grant award ceremony this afternoon in Pittsfield. Chris Fowles and I, uh, applied for Cyber Security Awareness Training Program Grant last Thursday, and we have received official notification that we have been awarded this grant. Uh, there will be a holiday luncheon at Town Hall for our municipal employees from noon to 1:30 PM tomorrow. If any of you are available and like to stop in and wish our town employees happy holidays, please feel free to do so. Uh, the fiscal year 2023 budget request later, letters have been sent out to the departments, boards, and committees. And let's see, and I would like to recommend to the Personnel Policy and Procedure Committee Board that there be a change to sick leave in the P P B rules and regulations. Currently, someone could work here up to 11-plus months and not be able to take a sick day until having up to five days preloaded for the, uh, for the upcoming fiscal year is done on July 1st. I believe that employees should be allowed to accrue sick days and use them before almost a year wait. I would also like to review the vacation leave and possibly recommend tweaking that also. I recommend that if allowed to bring these changes forward, the P P B, um, and they do approve them, that we request that they hold a hearing on those few changes rather than trying to update the rules and regulations all at once and then send their recommendations to the Select Board. So, basically, we could hire someone on July 15th of a year. They would not be entitled to take a sick day until five days were loaded on July 1st of the following fiscal year. And I think that's not correct, that our employees should be allowed to accrue them. The way, the way that sick leave is currently written is that, and I'll mess this up on, on the scale, but if they haven't worked here a full six months before that July 1st date, if they've been here zero to one months, they will get zero days loaded. If they've been here one to two months, they'll get one day loaded. If they've been here two to three months, they'll get three days loaded, all the way up to the six months and loading five days on the July 1st. However, it doesn't allow, like I say, anybody that has started in July, August, September, to accrue any time and be able to use it before that. If you, you know, if you can accrue that within six months, my belief is that someone, you should be able to actually accrue it during that year you started, uh, and be, you know, once you've accrued it, be able to, and allowed to use it. So, I, I think it's a, it's a hole that needs addressing.
That seems like a very.
Yeah. And then I think.
Unfair, you know, rule that, that I, I've never heard of that kind of situation. Usually, any place that I've worked, you've been allowed to accrue it. I mean, you have a probationary period perhaps, but then you, you're still accruing your, your leave. You know, you may have a period that you can't take it, but to wait a whole year before you can even.
But after your probationary period, you're able to take it.
And actually, it's interesting because for sick leave, no reference to not utilizing it in your probationary period. But obviously, if you go by the chart, you'd almost be out of your probationary period before you accrued anything. But there is, there is no statement under sick leave that you cannot take a sick day in your probationary period, other than the fact that you're, can't take it to the following fiscal year anyway. So, but in vacation leave, it specifically says you are not able to take a vacation day within your 90-day probationary period.
However, then, the problem all along here has been that once you get past July 1, you get the bank of all your vacation for that year as opposed to accruing it. So, if anybody leaves beginning of July, they can basically take all their vacation with them. That needs to change also.
It's, it's probably a little more contentious, uh, or controversial, but it's gonna be, uh, the second item that I recommend. Like I say, I want to take a, a little deeper dive into vacation leave because it's been brought to my attention that one person that would be here one year and 10 months on July 1st of 2022, uh, will still not get two weeks vacation. So, I think there's some things there. But the other, other thing, I believe, and probably both in sick leave and vacation leave, is rather than, uh, doing the sick leave or the vacation bank, that I try to tweak the language so that basically from day one, and whatever it is, whether it's half a day a month for, you know, sick leave or .75 days a month or whatever it is on vacation time, that you basically start accruing it from the day you're here and that's it. And, and again, you know, do the parameters of, uh, not being allowed to, you know, carry over more than a week except for under the, you know, Select Board's approval or the P P B's approval or, or whatever. But yes, I agree with you, Maureen. That is something I also feel, um, should be, or needs to be addressed. Because no matter where I've been, when you've got, whether it's a January 1st, uh, bank that gets reinstituted or a July 1st bank, you do see individuals that, okay, that's basically when they work to and retire on that date because they've got a whole another year's worth of, uh, you know, vacation time to utilize.
Yeah. Well, I think we, we've talked about things that probably need some, some changing within the personnel handbook. And that's, you know, that's a main, major task in its own right. So, I, I think I, I kind of like the idea of just picking out, whether it's a chapter or whatever you want to call it, but picking out a, a particular topic too and just start chopping away at it little bit by little bit rather than trying to chew the entire manual, which I think is gonna take several months. I mean, if this is, this is.
Probably even take even longer than that. But these are a couple of things that I was, all of a sudden.
It would seem like they would not be complicated.
Yeah.
Language fixes if, if we had agreement on them.
I had, I had to look into these in some detail over the weekend for a different reason and they just glaringly popped out at me. So.
Can I just ask, John, are you involved in current updates or is the plan to go to P Q B or send a memo or something?
My plan would be is if the, as long as the board, you know, is, agrees with me, that I would send a memo to P P B and hopefully be able to get on their next agenda to at least discuss, uh, these changes.
Yeah. I mean, it's a pending item that we stopped until we got other folks, but it's on the agenda and there's more than enough time to get it on the January 3rd agenda to add in there. So, I don't, I don't see an issue with, I mean, my, the, I'm all for accruals. I just, in, in the back of my mind, I, I believe what you're gonna find is that we're doing, that there's probably a paper process that's happening here because the payroll isn't automated. So, accruals will create an additional hardship for work because it's extra work. It's easy to say, hey, you got five days here and that's it versus every pay cycle.
Right. Gotcha.
All the more reason to automate payroll.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, I think.
Yeah. And then lastly, uh, we have received a letter from Mayor LaChapelle of the City of East Hampton in regard to the increased reliance from our Southampton EMS calls for ambulance service, uh, which have increased over the past five months and requesting that we look into a way of reducing that reliance on their services, uh, or they would have to look into increasing the cost of these services to us, uh, under the mutual aid agreements. And then, uh, lastly, under upcoming Select Board meetings for January are scheduled for the 4th and the 18th.
Okay. Any questions?
I have two questions.
Under F. Could you just explain, Ed, the reason? I mean, I, it was a very comprehensive
report about the Manhand Meadow Sanctuary Trail Restoration.
Yeah.
Either that or.
Either that or, Joy, I know you're the representative of Conservation Commission, what was the problem? What is the problem and why are they going back out to bid?
No communication from...
From the company that...
Yeah. They haven't received any communication from him about when he was going to start work or anything.
Really?
He hasn't signed a contract with the town either, to my understanding.
It's a little bit more involved than that.
Okay, now, you're bringing that forward, I'm going to say this, there's been no communication because the Conservation Commission asked him to redo the specs because some of them had changed. That is not the contractor's job or responsibility to redo the specs, so they have not received any communication in that manner.
Okay.
It's not that he hasn't signed a contract or anything else, in my opinion. Okay? They asked him something specific, which doesn't really fall into his bailiwick.
Okay, that is not the communication that I had received the other night from the meeting, and they seemed fair and happy, and there's this discussion about term, like, if they could go work with someone else because they seemed unhappy with him. And I said, I just asked if there was the contract, and they said, no. And so I said, if you really don't want to work with this person, this is how you would go about doing it.
Yeah, and part of the issue is a timing issue in that, given the endangered species that are down there, there's only a certain window, I believe, between November and March that someone can work down there. So if the work had been able to begin on time with the original specs, the work should be happening now, which is not.
Right, right.
And therefore, that postpones it even further for any, anything involving wheeled vehicles, is what we were told. There may be other work that could be done on the trails that don't involve vehicle invasion, shall we say, of the sanctuary. But yeah, I didn't know that CONCOM had taken that vote last night. But I know both Ed and I had put out a call to the contractor to try and see where he was standing on this, and Ed is the one who talked to him, saying that really, he kind of perceived it as a potential conflict of interest, as somebody who's going to be doing the work and then changing the specs. And I think that was his delay, whether he had not, he had not well articulated that, and I don't know why we had to go this many months before we kind of found out part of that issue. So I agree that there was a lack of communication in general.
Yeah, that was not, the Conservation Commission did not know that last night. They did not know there may have been a conflict of interest.
To go another season without the use of that, when the extension isn't until September, is really unfortunate.
Right.
So the other question I had to do is about, are we going to have an opportunity? We got the letter from East Hampton about the emergency services. They went so far as to even suggest a dollar amount beyond a certain threshold of using the service. What's the next step on that?
What's the next step in responding to Mayor LaChapelle's letter, or what's the next step in pay?
Well, what's the next step for our town to ensure that we have adequate, I know he said that all the, other than two shifts, it's covered, but she mentioned a span of time. I'm not sure if she's talking about the fiscal year. Does it start January 1? Does it start June 30? She talked about any service over 25, mutual aid. So what's the next step? And when would that start? And it doesn't, it's nothing we sign, so is this just, what's the next step in terms of a formalizing...
I got the impression that she was, that she's talking about starting this in July in the next fiscal year 23.
And I think probably the simplest reply at this point in time is just to make her, and I'll respond before the end of this weekend, that make the mayor know that there were additional funds appropriated at this recent special town meeting.
Okay.
And then from there, it's, okay, goes to the P P P B for their approval and then, yeah, back to the Select Board, so.
But you're thinking that this time thing doesn't start until the next fiscal year?
That's the way the letter is...
Is that the way you heard it or read it?
I would say so. I would also say that there's probably some negotiation that would actually have to go on between the two communities rather than just getting implemented, so.
Okay, thanks.
Well, the other thing is, I'm sorry, John isn't here to answer. Our inability to respond to all of these calls a result of the, well, what he informed us as the lower rate of pay for people? And will this be, what we voted on, will this plug the hole so that we have more people so that we're able to respond on a higher percentage of these calls?
Part of the issue is that he has not had the two people, the qualified paramedic, to be available on some of these calls. So we've had many more...
The chief believes it does. Whether it actually does or not, only one way we'll find out, so.
I mean, there's got to be, you know, obviously, he's going to be going now to the P Q B to look at job description and wage changes for the E M T's paramedics, is my understanding, is his next step. And I guess I don't know whether we've done any, I mean, I know he said he's been having a hard time recruiting, and he's spent time looking at other towns and what their pay scales are, et cetera. So he seems to have a pretty strong package of information to go to P Q B with. But I think, I guess I don't know how much we've tried to actually recruit already or where, and we're, you know, we're working on his telling us that he's had a hard time recruiting, given the existing salary. So I guess I'm hoping that if he can go to P Q B and get some changes there, that that would at least enhance people's idea about coming here, given that these are all on-call, right? And they're employed, that means for the most part, they're employed elsewhere in other towns. And if they had a choice to give a free day of their time to come and work somewhere, you know, why would they come to Southampton when they could go elsewhere for a better rate, right?
Money, right.
So theoretically, I guess that's all we can say at this point in time. We want to see if things happen through P Q B the way John hopes, and we can advertise and attract some people if this will really play out. But I think it is a situation where we have to be very cautious with, you know, our neighbors in East Hampton who have been very good at responding to us. But as she points out here, that, you know, the taxpayers in East Hampton also have an expectation of their own, Fire and EMS Department, and we are really kind of interfering a little bit more than we should.
And the only other thing I would suggest is this letter goes to the Do Ad Hoc Committee on Cost Efficiency to start to put into context some of the issues that we're facing.
Good point, yep.
That's all. Okay. John?
So a few things. The second-to-last paragraph, the very last sentence, says, "A revised ALS intercept agreement will be forwarded to your community reflecting a change to the same rate as well." I guess I'd like to see the current one that's in place.
The what?
The ALS...
The current ALS agreement that's signed and in place. I don't need it right now, but when the new one shows up for comparison across the two. Two, I've been saying this for three months now, and it's the reason why I didn't support this backwards approach to adjusting the wages on the EMS or E M T paramedic side. This isn't the way to do it. You don't ask for the blank check and then come in here and make statements tonight that I assured the people, these are his words, I'm going to apply for retro pay. That hasn't even been discussed anywhere. He's already saying it publicly that he's already told the troops that he's pushing for retro pay. So now if we don't do that, well, it's a Select Board against these guys. They're not on-call. They're per diems. He has shifts to cover around the clock, 24/7. I've asked three, two times in this meeting, this Select Board meeting in the past, for the chief to provide a list of when the shifts have been open and there's been no coverage. And he's repeatedly said their minimum and mutual aid has covered it. Clearly, Mayor LaChapelle disagrees with us. I have no reason not to believe her numbers. I'm still, I still want, I don't know how else I need to do this. Do I have to file a formal written request to the chair to compound the department head to provide this material to us? Ideally, I'd like it before this comes up. He also referenced tonight that the P P P B Board has asked for more information than ever before. I sent an email to him that I copied the town administrator on, asking for two documents. One, you're saying there's open posts. The book says, I need a summary job posting and a job description. Those are the two things we asked for. So if he doesn't have them, how is he recruiting? Something doesn't add up, and we're being backed into a corner here. I'm not so sure if it's a matter of increasing the wages from 20 to 23, will staff then say, okay, I'll come in and cover that shift? He doesn't have to go out and recruit? Well, then, maybe that's why he's not producing a summary or a job description. There's too many open answers here to just say, let's increase the wages and be done with it. And this is all scheduled to come up on the 3rd, and I'm sure we'll have another, you know, stellar turnout.
Okay.
So I guess my question is, how do I get the answer to my question?
Well, hopefully, I'm sure he's been listening a little bit tonight, but I think that's a point where, Ed, you can probably talk to him sideways on a one-on-one conversation. I don't know that we need the formal request, do we, from the Select Board?
Well, I guess because I'm at the 90-day period that I've originally asked for, the only other thing that I can see is putting in a formal written request for public records. And I don't think as a Select Board member, I should have to do that.
No, he reports to Ed.
No, I don't think so.
I would probably just follow up on your email, John, and say, here is the request on behalf of P P P B. This information is required by such and such a date so that we may fully review your request on January 3.
Correct. To be clear, though, the job summary and description, I do believe, is the P P B thing. The other with the open shifts, I don't think that's in the realm of the P P B. I, as a Select Board member, before I make my own decision to vote, however I'm going to vote, want to be able to answer that question in my mind.
Okay.
And then I think what you're running into, and this is from, shall we say, my experience over the last three and a half years or so, is he has a, shall we say, scale that he has worked out with the P P B in the past. Doesn't necessarily mean that each one of those little categories has a job description to go with it. And that may be one of the pieces that go along with this. And obviously, at this point in time, with the changes to the P P B, is that there's no one currently on the P P B that would have that institutional knowledge of what was worked along with the Fire EMS chief in the past to establish those rates.
So given that the chief reports to you, can you reach out to him and gather this information so that it's ready for them before the meeting, the P Q B meeting?
I will make it simple. I will tell him that he has to provide that information before that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay. Any further comments, questions about the town administrator report?
Oh, and while we were on wages and whatever, I did forget to add one thing to my report, and I just want to remind the Select Board that on January 1, 2022, there will be another 75-cent increase to the minimum wage for the state, which we are not required to meet. But from some of the past, shall we say, year, year and a half of what has gone on, I just want to make you aware of it, and if the board is thinking of doing the same thing we did last year and the year before, of actually asking the department heads, or first of all, identifying anyone that would be making under the new minimum wage, and then asking those department heads to make a request to P P B to meet that minimum wage for those employees.
And I'd like to see a total calculation of what that adds up to.
How many people that involves?
How many people, what the total amount is?
Okay.
It's 1425?
What's that?
Would that be 1425 as the new state minimum wage?
Yes, we'd be going from 1350 to 1425.
1425.
And then the very last step of that legislation would be implemented on January 1, 2023, which would take it to $15.
The biggest group of employees that this affected last year were the firefighters.
Firing a few of the substitute, library people, I think, yeah.
And election workers.
Yeah, right. I think we moved everybody up to the 1350. I'm pretty sure we did that much.
Everybody got moved except the election workers.
We did.
Okay.
So when did you move them, though?
At the annual meeting.
Yeah.
At the, yeah, at the beginning of the school year.
Even though it went into effect in January 1, they didn't see it until July 1 forward?
It was retroactive.
Yeah, it was retroactive in January 1.
Right. And then, so for this narrow window, right, who was ever below the 1425 and coming up, is it potentially, would that, would the source of funds for that to make it now be ARPA funds for the premium pay for those making, because originally, it was written for under $13 an hour? Right, so that's the minimum wage, so that we don't have to deal with, we don't have to, they don't have to wait six months to get a retro back. We can make the change, once we know the information, and apply ARPA funds to it as part of the, to get everybody to minimum wage.
I don't think that would apply, ARPA funds would apply to all of those positions.
No, the ARPA, well...
It was for people who weren't...
That's the same thing as premium pay working during COVID.
No, but if you read the section on premium pay, it specifically talks about people making less than the minimum wage of $13 to bring up. So as that minimum wage, you know...
Okay, maybe. I don't know about that. I didn't read it that way, but...
I would have to take a look at that since ARPA is federal funding and the federal minimum wage is $7.25 an hour.
So my photographic memory tells me, it specifically says $13. So I guess I would just ask to look at that paragraph, and if you find my argument to be valid, bring it back for consideration instead of making those being paid less than minimum wage to wait six months for retro pay.
So let's bring it back up on the January 4 meeting?
I think the advantage of doing it also at the time of the annual, you know, like, budget process is that it allowed us also, I mean, we had to be careful because when we raised up certain people that were in the minimum wage, there are other people that were above it, but then the degree of difference was a concern.
Yep.
So I think it allowed us to look at it more in a bigger picture than just the positions that happened to be below, because we could be actually narrowing the gap between two positions that are very different.
Okay. We'll bring it back up for January 4 with some other information about those, the employee, number of employees that are involved and the amount of money that involves and the source of funding. Okay? All right, with that, how about a few Select Board reports? Can we do some fairly summarized reports? Who would like to go first?
I can go first. The only committee that actually met was last night, was Conservation Commission, and I think we heard the gist of what went on there. Their next meeting is going to be January 3 at 6 p.m. Housing Authority did not meet since my last report. Their next meeting is also January 30, or January 3 at 6 p.m. Planning Board did not meet, but their next meeting will be January 5 at 7 p.m. And I believe Open Space will be meeting January 6 at 6 p.m., I believe. And that's all.
Good. Ready?
The only committees that met, CPA met was only to prepare the article for the warrant. It was a change in funding the entire park thing, and that was prior to the town meeting. And then the Board of Assessors met, and that, they're just taking care of business in the office in the absence of a permanent principal assessor. There was one applicant, I think, for principal assessor, but was not qualified, so that continues to be posted in Indeed. And then Conservation hasn't met, and I do believe Public Safety posted a meeting for the 10th or something of January.
Okay. Just one thing on the assessors position. I think I got, and I don't know, maybe we all did, a notification today from the Collins Center. So as another thought, besides Indeed, would the Collins Center maybe be a possible place to, I don't know, reach out to in terms of...
Yeah, I think the funding piece might be the challenge, because we did hire Collins when we were hiring the town administrator, and, you know, it was a good amount of money there to use them.
Yeah.
So that's the issue, I think.
Yeah. So anyway, just a thought. I know they do more executive recruitment probably, but anyway.
Yeah, I think it's only been on Indeed for less than a month, a couple of weeks.
I'm going to say a couple of weeks, I believe.
Yeah, so I think they're going to continue to see what comes in.
And is it always also in the monthly beacon?
Oh, they had put it in the beacon long ago.
Right. And then there's the Mass Association of Assessors. It was posted there before also.
Okay. All right. All right. Yep, next. John?
I'm good.
Nothing?
I'll count it.
Ready?
Okay. The Norris Committee, and John chime in when you, okay? The Norris Committee met on December 8, and I'll give you the abbreviated version. The discussion of the fiscal year 23 budget is underway with staffing needs heading the list. The school wants to increase its early intervention services to prevent future increases in the need for special education services. It appears to be a cost-effective strategy. There has been a 70% increase in COVID cases in elementary schools across the state of Massachusetts since November. Norris started pool testing...
since November. Norris started pool testing on November 30th and are pleased with the process. They also instituted a test-in-state program for students who have had close contact with positive COVID cases. Students are allowed, these students are allowed to remain in the school as long as they continue to test negative, and parents seem to be very pleased with this method. For the first time in my experience, we received a central office budget that alloc, whose monies were allocated by each town. This transparency is very informative for everyone involved. Norris plans to produce its budget in January, and there will be a preliminary regional budget that will be completed by February, with a final vote by the school committee in March, in preparation for the town to consider it at its annual meeting. The committee also discussed giving two half-days of in-school time off for teachers to help address some morale issues. And there was also discussion of potential premium pay for teachers and staff from ARPA funds. No decisions have been made. The school committee approved the Norris School Code of Conduct. This is the third iteration of it. They came to agreement. And then finally, on the, they had a lengthy discussion regarding the negotiations of the current regional working agreement. It appears that one of Southampton's goals in these talks is to achieve cost efficiency through redesigning the structure of the regional relationship and the voting methodologies. No decision again here. Discussions are continuing. Then finally, on the PVPC with the, I don't know.
HR.
The HR Regional Resource Grant. They issued an RFP. They got no responses. They felt it was a timing issue. The money has been guaranteed to be extended into 2022. The RFP will be reissued in January, when the workload of qualified entities are more like, and were more likely to receive a positive response. And then finally, the Board of Health heard everything they talked about tonight in their presentation.
Okay.
And that's it.
Very good. Okay. I'll just jump in on other committees here, especially tech and grants. So the tech committee did not meet. Our chairperson has had some family issues that he's been dealing with. So we've got to hopefully get a meeting done in early, early January. The grant committee has met, and we're working with Chief Workman as the EMD on the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update work. And we'll be meeting again in early January and hopefully get that one submitted by the middle of January, third week of January at the latest. The Greenway Committee, they have two of their people that they've delegated to start working on a Mass Trails grant that would be requesting funds for design work on the future Greenway. And so that application is due in by February 1st. And so they're starting to work on it. And then the grant committee will join in with them on that. As Ed mentioned, he and I put in a cybersecurity training awareness grant application last week. And this we did because the Community Compact IT, I think we reported last meeting that that had been a $72,000 request, and we got about $51,000 out of that. Some of that, that was actually awarded. So not knowing exactly how much of that was going to go toward training, this other opportunity came up from the state, and we thought we should try to jump on that and sort of fill in the gaps, in case we were low on cybersecurity training possibilities. So we've put in a request for what, it's obviously, it's not money. It's going to be an online training over a period of months.
For 76 seats, I believe we put in.
76 seats. So anybody who's listening that has a townofsouthampton.org address, you're in, you're in this pool. So.
That's everyone in this room right now.
Everyone in this room. So select board, town department heads, those that are chairs of committee that have a townofsouthampton.org. It's basically a cybersecurity training kind of thing that'll happen two or three times, probably, on a Zoom call with the state, where they put out a little test of, you know, what do you know about cybersecurity, phishing scams, other kinds of things to keep our internet and systems up to snuff here. So, and I believe we heard that we were awarded our 76 seats. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
We did. So this won't be until January or February that they get started, but.
And one of the things that the board and committee members and employees will learn out of this is basically what to look for in an email that isn't quite right, that if you actually open it up, you are basically opening up a huge can of worms for not only yourself, but the whole network.
Yeah. You know, you're opening up something to malware or something else. And I myself, as careful as I am, I did something very similar not very long ago. And immediately, you know, called in and canceled my credit cards and just started over.
Catch it at the worst time.
It's just, it's just crazy. So it's something that we all need a refresher on about what to look for, you know, what's a, what's a, what's an email that is, looks so good that it's very convincing, it looks like it's right, but behind it, it might not be. So how do you verify? So those will be the kinds of things. And I think we all can use a good refresher on that. So we've been approved for that, and we'll let you know when any more of that's happening, and when it will start. But sometime in January, we hope. Maybe not till February. And the last thing is Chief Illingsworth informed us, the grant committee today, that he had applied for and has been awarded two state 911 grants. One for support and incentive in the amount of $30,807, and another one for training in the amount of $12,372.96. So congratulations to the chief for keep on, keeping on applying for these grants and getting them. This is at least the second year that I'm aware of, since I've been on select board, and I'm sure it goes far beyond that. But he's been able to apply for these grants and get them, and that will be great. So that's all we have from the grants.
Chris, could you just mention that $3,000 was for what?
It says support and incentive. So I'm not totally sure all that that covers. And I'm not sure if this is, the last one, I think, was focused on the dispatch folks. And I don't know if this is dispatch or police itself, actually, but we'll find that out. Maybe a little more detail. I didn't ask him that, actually. But, so some of it may go for some wage support, or maybe some overtime support. I'm not sure.
And this is one that he actually applies for each year. And this year, when he went and applied for it, we'll say he was denied, but we weren't eligible to apply because the assessors were behind in upgrading the GIS maps. So, and Ian was very complimentary in his email today. He said he went and talked with Janine about it, and, you know, in a relatively short period of time. And I think it was like a period of two years that they hadn't updated the maps, that Janine had gotten everything done and updated that was needed. So we were eligible for this grant again. So, you know, thank you to Janine Damina and the Assessors Department for that.
Very good. Okay.
I thought it was mentioned, was it mentioned today that, did you go today to Pittsfield?
Yes.
Oh, you want to just say a word or two about that? And are there any photos?
Sure. So I, 3 o'clock today, there was a presentation by the Lieutenant Governor and the Cabinet Secretary of IT, and I'm Woods, I believe is his last name, at the Pittsfield City Hall. And the, all but three communities were present. And we, I was joined by Kim Florck on behalf, she was representing the IT committee, the ad hoc committee. And I think it was 51 or $53,000. There were photos taken with us, with the Lieutenant Governor that Kim has.
Okay.
Those will be coming down.
Yep.
And then the Lieutenant Governor also announced, to everyone's surprise in the room, that there's an extra round of municipal fiber grants that's going to open for a 30-day window. So Kim was going to bring that back to the ad hoc committee to discuss.
And that opens when?
I think it's March 15th to April 15th.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, it was, it was, nice turnout.
No, good. Yeah. No, thanks to John and Kim for going there.
Thanks.
To attend that. And it's interesting, this is like one of the first grant ceremonies, grant award ceremonies, that has even been at this end of the state. I mean, most of the times, you know, they're down on the Cape, or down closer, somewhere on the outskirts of Boston, between Western and Boston. So having it in Pittsfield was, was great. And I think both Ed and I were a little bit leery with select board tonight to be gone, just in case. And so thanks, John, for going, and Kim as well.
That's what the vice chair is for. I'm disposed. That's right.
Get the money.
Get the money, yeah. All right. Very good. All right. Let's keep on moving, guys. We've got a long way to go here. Old business, audit update, outstanding issues. Ed, you want to give us a brief idea? Have we made any headway on some of this list?
I picked away at a couple, but actually Bradley and I were talking about this today. And next week, we probably won't come up for air, but next week, our project is to go through everything and get all the answers back to Malanson on these.
Yeah. I think we really have to focus on getting this done before the end of December. If we, if we drag this into January, we're really.
Especially if we're hiring somebody.
Chris, you don't want to say that, because I've got all the texts and emails and stuff that you send me every day.
Are you committed to this by the end of the year?
Yeah. So we're gonna, we're gonna get it done, especially, yes, indeed. All right. Anything new on East Street Bridge? I know that.
Well, you get to listen to me on this all the time. So I'm gonna do something, and I probably shouldn't, because I'm surprising him. But why don't we hear from somebody with a little bit more technical expertise, since Randall's here tonight, and hear his take on how the actual deconstruction progress is going?
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. Basically, I only, I haven't spoken with the contractor, but I did go out today and take a look. It looks like the bridge is completely done, completely gone. And it appears as though they're doing grubbing and site prep for what comes next, which is basically pouring the new abutments. And I noticed structural steel was actually on-site, which was good, because
That's new.
That was something that I was cautiously optimistic that there could be supply chain problems. And I'm gonna knock on this simulated wood. So I saw these all as good signs. I have a MassWorks quarterly report that's due by January 1st, wrapping up this week, detailing all this stuff. So that's about where I'm at. Generally, I just think generally we're going in a good, in a good direction.
That's great. Good.
And I don't know if you all read the article, but I think the reporter did a really good job of condensing a very big project into a, into an article. And Southampton made the front page, and it was for something good, so.
You and Ed did a great job in that article.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Great. And any, any other issues in terms of East Street detours? Anything, that's all working okay?
We've heard a few things from, I don't know how far you want me to get into it, about, we've had residents express concern about the Gun Road intersection with Riverdale. And I did get a traffic engineer to come out and do a little consult with me. His hot take was that it's an uncontrolled intersection, which is completely acceptable for low-volume traffic. But I did get a proposal for him, in case we wanted to evaluate that particular intersection. I'm not convinced that the money spent on it would be worth it, but it's weird.
So it's an issue, more people are coming off the highway on?
That's the assertion of the residents.
More traffic on Riverdale.
Right. Where I think, I would think there would be more traffic on Strong and Moosebrook from, from the detour. But we take in all complaints and assess them.
Great.
Although I was, I was surprised, I think it was last week, when I had gone out and gone down Colony and Line Street to view what was going on with our speeding complaints on Line Street, and came Gun Road as an alternative. And I was surprised at how many people directly in front of me made that left on Gun Road and went all the way through to College Highway. So it seems like it is getting some, in my opinion, some extra traffic from detour.
You know what the funny thing is? When I used to live on Line Street, it was a long time of living there before I realized that Coleman Road went out to Route 10. I used to run Gun Road, like, and it was like, oh my God, I can't believe all this time I've been actually going the long way.
Yeah, Coleman is the, is the shorter route.
Yeah. There's a lot of traffic on Gun Road at that intersection with Pleasant, too.
Yep. And lastly, Randall, I'll put you on the spot, but is there gonna be any other work on East Street this year? I know you talked about some pothole filling or.
Yeah, so we ran out of time. I kept working with the contractor, and they were putting in tentative dates, and none of them ended up working out with the weather. And he gave me one last date, and I made the call. I said no, because at that point, in addition to getting it paved, I would have to get it line painted. And I don't think, we have the same issues with paving that we do with line painting. Once you drop below a certain temperature, you can't do it.
Right.
So we are on schedule, which is a nebulous thing, I guess. But we are on schedule for springtime to do that paving on East Street.
Okay. And now the asphalt plants have closed anyway, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're done.
Yeah, even the secondary ones.
And that was a problem with a couple of our dates. Their quality control won't put down asphalt after there's been salt applied to the road. But then we had a massive rainstorm, and the presumption was it washed the salt off. But then we were fighting temperatures, so.
Okay. I just wanted to have that out there.
It just got too late, and, but it's still on for next spring.
Randall, are there sequential pictures being taken of the bridge?
I'm trying to gather some, but, you know, Ed knows he's in the same boat. I'll sit down at my desk and try and do one thing, get pulled in five different directions. So what I have planned for the day doesn't, doesn't always work. But I did get out there today and take a couple of photos.
I think historically, great to have.
Kind of punctuated of the construction.
Key, you know, key milestones or something, at least.
Yeah, I just tried to get out there, but then I'm also, contractors are looking at you like, who are you and why are you on our work site?
Yeah. Okay. Good. All right. Thanks, Randall. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Randall. Sorry to put you on the spot, but.
Okay. Moving on to new business. We have a couple of new things, one that we've never dealt with here. This is a class action opioid settlement. Came to us from the Mass Attorney General's Office. And Ed, would you like to kind of explain that to us?
Sure. There are two different settlements that we are eligible to enter in with. One is with the distributors, and one is, well, actually, there's three distributors in the one, and then the other is with the manufacturer. So this information came from the Attorney General's Office. And they are asking us to join with the other communities in Massachusetts. And the more communities that join, the bigger the settlement the state will get and distribute, or distribute. So in, there's a lot of information there. I believe it is a good thing if the select board were to authorize me to, on their behalf, join in both of these two settlements. We can do it online. I can do it tomorrow afternoon. So it would make us part of the state group's settlement with these distributors and manufacturer. And eventually, we would be receiving funds that are funneled through the state on this settlement the Attorney General is heading up on behalf of Massachusetts.
And they've calculated a level of percentage per town, et cetera. Apparently, they have a magical formula that they're working with.
Yes.
And just to clarify that, with this extra money, though, I, I'm reading it to be limited to dealing with any issues to, to help with substance abuse.
It is.
Prevention and reduction and treatment and recovery kinds of activities, right?
Absolutely. But, you know, I'll be the first one to tell you that, you know, we all like to turn, turn our heads or a blind eye or whatever. But, you know, those issues are here in Southampton, you know, also. So the funding would be going towards a very good use.
No, that would be good for Ian's department, I mean, because they end up dealing with most of those issues, don't they?
I can't hear you, Francine. I'm sorry.
Oh, I said, I said, that would be good for Ian's department, for the police department, because they end up dealing with a lot of those issues.
That would be good for the police department. It'd be good, good for the Board of Health. It would be, you know, good for the town in general.
And the school.
Yeah.
And the school, yes. Absolutely. That's a good, yeah, that's great. So I'll move to authorize Ed, on behalf of the select board, to complete the applications, so that we can join in on the. so that we can join in on the opioid settlement cases.
Okay. All right.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
And we're clear that the amount of money to be received will be more than our legal fees to become part of it.
Really doing it this way, there aren't any legal fees.
Okay, good. Yeah.
Yeah, nothing we would have to do that I've read on that one, anyway. So this would be for two different settlements, is that correct?
Correct. One is with a manufacturer, and one is with three different distributors.
Okay. So, having heard that, any, no other discussion? Can I have a vote, please? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right. Ed, you are so authorized to get this in. Thank you very much.
I'll take care of that tomorrow.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Next one is also in your bailiwick here, the laptop deployment?
Yes. And the last time that Wally was out here, it was the perfect storm. We had two laptops left to deploy from the CARES Act. One was for the youth librarian in the library, and the library had no internet that day, which meant that the technician could not connect to the programs he needed to, to complete the deployment. So that one was half-done and is waiting to be completed. The other one scheduled for that day would have been for the health director, which the health director and the Board of Health have said they don't need because they have a laptop that is basically a year old. So that is new. It can be updated with anything that a new one would. So Wally only wants to come out once more, so we know we have to finish the library one. We now have one extra CARES Act laptop that needs to be deployed that same day they come out. So my recommendation to the Select Board is to take that laptop that has no home right now and to deploy it to the assistant town accountant so that she would be able to work from home if need be. Currently, for our financial team, the assessors department has one, and the treasurer collector's office, the treasurer collector and the assistant treasurer collector have one of these laptops. Our town accountant has one of these laptops. So this would make, give the accounting department the ability for both the town accountant and the assistant town accountant to be able to work remotely. And also, you know, if anything happened to either one of them, that either one of them could back the other one up by working remotely.
Good. Okay. Any thoughts on that?
No, I think that's a very wise decision. And I'm sorry it wasn't part of the first deployment, but at least it's getting there now. I think it's a good decision.
Hindsight's always 20/20, and we all learn as we go along. So, yeah, I would say that probably should have been one that we had planned for in the beginning, but with that position actually being open, it probably, this, we didn't think about it.
Okay. So could I have a motion to that effect, then?
I move to approve Ed's redeployment of the laptop to the assistant town accountant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Okay. Next agenda item, Public Safety Building Committee Charge and Committee makeup discussion. So we have before us, let's see, we have a page here that gave us an idea of what the Public Safety Committee that met once or twice already, I believe, since the committee has sort of reactivated, and they have at least, they have some leadership in there right now that I believe was put in for a temporary basis, at least, until a full committee is formed. And so what they have given us is their ideas about who should be a member of the committee, and then some of the information that would constitute pretty much the charge, I guess, of the committee. So would anybody like to take a stab at some of that? Shall I read out what they're proposing for the members of the committee? Just so we can all...
Maybe you said it, but who authored this?
I'm assuming it came from the Public Safety Committee.
Okay.
I believe they had a meeting specifically to work on this as a recommendation to the Select Board.
We had asked them, I think, to get us something in terms of their thoughts...
Okay.
...that we would take a look at. They're well aware that it's up to the Select Board to determine the charge and all of those things, but this is their...
But do you think we should have the previous charge, though? I mean...
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't know if, how different this is from the first one. I didn't pull that up, but...
I can bring it up on our website.
So one of the things I think that had been talked about was just the membership. Shall we take a look at that first? Let's break this into two parts?
Sure.
So what they're suggesting is a member of the Select Board to act as a liaison to the board with voting privileges on the committee, police chief or their designee, fire chief or their designee, member of the council on aging, member of the finance and/or capital committee, member of the school committee or related youth programs in town, member of the historical commission, and five members of the community representing the diversity of the town. So that gives somewhere around 12, maybe a little bit more in terms of numbers of people, a broader committee perhaps than what exists right now.
What it says right now, and I don't think it's ever really represented this before, like, for example, they mentioned in the meeting that they've never had a finance committee member, but it says the committee shall consist of nine members, a police department rep, a fire department rep, a finance committee map, a historical committee rep, two Select Board reps, and four representing the community. So that's what the charge was back in 2016.
Okay. So this has enlarged a little bit by about three members, perhaps, here, although if I heard you there, there was maybe one less from the town. You said four members of the community?
Yeah, four representatives of the community.
All right. And then two on the Select Board, though.
Yeah. Does it make any sense to put some qualifications around the five members who are representing the community? For instance, would you want someone to...
I was just gonna suggest doing that.
Engineer, construction?
Yeah.
Construction, engineering, architecture.
Yeah.
And if I think about it a while, I can probably come up with some other ones.
I think IT would be a good one.
You could say finance. Finance is good. Hmm?
Building inspector?
Yep.
No, we're talking about at-large.
Public...
From the community.
Construction, engineering, architecture.
Architecture, engineering, construction.
How about IT? Because they're looking to do some wiring and bells and whistles, no?
That'll be the construction or the architectural coverage.
Yeah.
Finance?
Well, finance, it says a member of the finance committee. I would just say finance. I mean, so many voters look to whether the finance supports something. So I would say not capital, but finance.
But I'm looking this as someone that has specific finance...
Finance background.
Background, not someone that serves as a finance committee and may not have financial background.
Oh, no. I was actually jumped up to where it says finance or capital, and I'm suggesting that that representative be someone from finance.
But I'm suggesting that as one of the qualifications from the at-large be finance.
At-large, finance.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, and at some point, and I'm trying to remember, was it not John or Summer, maybe it was one of the first meetings that I attended when they got going, and there was a talk about somebody who had been part of a public safety complex committee in another town that now lives...
Springfield, lives in town.
Now lives here, I believe.
Yep.
I mean, somebody that has had some real knowledge of working through this whole process.
Public complex building.
It would be one of the public people, but if there's somebody, if that's true, that that person exists in town, if we could potentially corral them to be part of this, to be a representative, having been through the whole process before in some other town, that might be...
So I, just on the memberships, I guess, some of these, I guess I understand, but, I mean, the police chief and fire chief or their designees, right? So somebody familiar with those areas. Council on Aging, is it because somebody's thinking maybe incorporating that into the group of what this new building may be?
Council on Aging Board, first of all, I think... It suggested that a senior, given the highest utilizers of the services, some of the emergency services.
Some of the emergency, but that would be...
I think Council on Aging might be tough. I think, first of all, I think it should be police chief and/or and fire chief, not their designee. I don't think we have any committee in town where you can substitute somebody else in.
Yeah.
And I think they should be a part of it.
Yeah.
And I think that Council on Aging, I would say a representative of the senior, so either friends, COA, or...
The senior population of town. Yep.
Because they're in the middle right now of putting together a senior center building committee, and I just think the Council on Aging is spread pretty thin. Somebody just left to become PQB because they need somebody...
Yeah. What, a member of...
So instead of a member of the Council on Aging...
Or friends of the senior community.
Senior population within the community.
Or friends of the seniors.
Okay.
And so then, I guess, the same thing under school committee or related youth, is that because they're looking for somebody under 21?
Yeah, just some representation from younger.
So I, because if these meetings are during the day, there's only one sitting school committee member that can attend, and I'm not going.
Yeah.
So, you know, if there's a youth or if they designate somebody, I don't know. And the five members of the community, maybe that should be four, because to me, it looks like there's one key person missing here. The person that's ultimately gonna be in charge once this building's built, and isn't the highway superintendent in charge of all public buildings in keeping?
Actually, I believe it's the town administrator on...
I mean, whoever's gonna deal with this Taj Mahal when we're done...
Well, it is gonna house my new office, so...
You're hopeful that contract gets renewed, aren't you?
I was thinking four, just to have an odd number. And 12's a lot, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Well, we could say four to five. I mean, depending on what we have for applicants, I suppose, too.
Well, you could eliminate that whole line, says school committee or related youth, and under the five from the community, look for somebody from the, yeah, it makes sense with the scene, you know, you want generational representation across the board.
You do, I think, yeah. I think the idea, too, is to get just broader representation and understanding about the need for this whole process project, you know?
And that would help in the planning, yes.
So what would be, so historical commission makes absolutely total sense, so that's fine. Let's work back up, then. So school committee, John, you're saying pull that out?
Eliminate that altogether. That gets you to your 11 people. And then, when you're looking for the five from the community, one of them, I mean, if we're gonna say someone has to be over 60 to qualify, then somebody has to be under 30. Can you figure it?
And I guess it just depends, let's see, if we've got five of the community, a member of the historical, that's six, right? Finance or whatever is seven. Friends or council on aging, that's eight. Fire and police, nine, 10. And then they had here, a member of the Select Board. Now, the previous charge, if I heard it, was two members, plus that's not counting the town administrator. So we either, we may go to 13 if we put everybody in there, right?
Personally, I don't like committees over nine to become unwieldy.
Well, I know that. Town administrator's not on this current list, however.
Two Select Board members in the previous one.
There were two on the...
And I think it was, at the time, Charlie was the chair of the Select Board, and John Martin was the additional representative.
So we could maybe do with just one Select Board member?
We could.
With the town administrator?
We could.
Yep.
That makes sense to me.
So one, two, three, four...
Select Board members over on that side.
Six.
Yeah. Unless it's an engineer or something.
Yeah.
Well, right now, Ed, you're on the grants committee, you're on the technology committee, there's gonna be a senior center building committee. I guess I'm just a little concerned about your, all of a sudden, you hadn't been on any of these...
He's on the cost efficiency committee.
In cost efficiency.
You're driving cloning technology. Cloning technology is getting right up there.
Yeah, right.
Planning to spend this much money, the town administrator should be on this committee.
Yeah.
And I wonder, under the community representation group, should we leave an opening to allow for the possibility of two of those, if we leave it at five, of two of those people not to be from the community? You know, perhaps we find somebody that volunteers that happens to live in West Hampton, but has all the credentials.
Yeah.
Could be.
You know, just leave the door open.
Yeah, because haven't they done something similar on conservation, where they got people with certain qualifications that we didn't have? That's a good suggestion. I think there's been some, you know, input for some other towns that have recently had a...
So you could say of the town and/or surrounding community?
Yeah.
Communities.
Okay. That makes sense.
So you'd have to also be willing to be on the senior center building committee. Is that a deal?
You could twist my arm.
Well, if you're gonna say that it's important to be on this one, then you're gonna have to say it's important to be on the senior center, one, two, then, otherwise...
Well, I'm looking at the dollar value, and this is gonna be a lot more than the senior center is, so...
Well, it better not come in at the same dollar amount as the town's not gonna go.
Yeah.
And the senior center's gonna probably be at least six to eight million.
Really?
Well, let's have the conversation right now, because John and I had it yesterday. Town has a levy limit, which is basically what we can spend within two and a half, Proposition two and a half. We have a levy ceiling. That is where you can go with any Proposition two and a half overrides or debt exclusions. Right now, from the information that was just entered into DLS, our levy ceiling only has $200,000 available to spend in it. So now you think about 1.6 million for a bridge or $8 million for, that debt payment has to fit into that $200,000. So now you start to have to thinking about what are the real priorities and how to get there.
Yeah, absolutely. I totally agree.
Yep.
And that's for the townspeople to decide.
No, I disagree with you. That's why you should have run for elected office. It's really for this board to step up and be an example for the town of where you think those priorities should be.
Right. We represent the townspeople, Ed. But ultimately, the town votes.
Ultimately, they have a vote.
Right, ultimately, the town votes.
Yeah, no, I think that was the point. Ultimately, the town votes.
That's my point. They're the ones that vote to borrow, you know, $270,000.
Right.
And, you know, recently approved to buy a dump truck, so...
Yep. Well, and hopefully, at some point, some of these things are coming off of our debt schedule, are they not? That would allow that...
Yeah, but they're not as big as what is gonna be going on.
But isn't the East Street Bridge going on eating up that $200,000?
Well, except that one is going on as a debt, yeah, debt exclusion, let's say, 25, I'll say 25 years.
Well, we hear that there's a debt ceiling here that we have to worry about. But nonetheless, we've got a priority in terms of the public safety complex, we've got a priority on the senior center. I don't know that it's fair to say one is more than the other. You've got different issues related to both. And we have potentially money in hand from an estate as long as we can make a plan for a senior center. So, you know, what's a little bit closer to reality, I guess, is part of the way I'm looking at it.
Reality is they're all needed, and it's a matter of timing, the building, the public safety...
Timing is a challenge.
The reason why we're doing this right now is because we need to have a charge for this public safety, and it does report to the Select Board, and there have been problems over 20 years of having a public safety complex and very little to show for it right now. And I want to be able to do our job in creating a charge and a composition that the voters and the people of this town can get behind and feel that there's a lot of good, open communication, and the right people are at the table. And that's what I'm hoping happens here. And if you are going to be on this committee, I'm going to ask that you commit to be on it without arm twisting on the senior center building committee as well, because that is going to be probably forming in January or February. We're already going to look at senior centers and talking to people, and we have to officially formulate an ad hoc committee to look into this. We have until April of 2023 and possibly over a million dollars that has been donated to us for a senior center design and plan.
Okay. Back to this. We have, if we keep it down to four members of the community or surrounding communities, that makes us 11 as I count this. Town administrator, member of the select board, police chief, fire chief. I think I heard we were favoring them themselves rather than designees. That's the way it was originally.
Right.
I know they're busy, but I think, you know...
They've been at every meeting that I've been at.
Yeah. They're, you know, when you start having designees, then I think it runs into other issues.
Very committed.
Member of the council on aging board or friends.
The senior population.
Okay, or friends of the senior center, so member of the senior population, however you want to call that. I heard a member of the finance committee rather than finance and/or capital committee. Do we agree with that?
Yep.
And then a member of historical commission, and then that would leave us with four members to have an odd number, four members of the surrounding or town community. That would give us 11. That feel like it's doable?
Yep.
I mean, as long as, you know, I mean, these get to be larger committees, but this would broaden it out a bit. Okay. Okay, moving on. Taking a look at what they're suggesting here for some of the points of the charge. Appointments for two to four years, varied at appointments, so staggered appointments, which is what we kind of usually do. These positions, I think, in the past had been, for this committee, had been open until finished kind of thing. And I think, Ed, you had recommended that we put a time limit on those, and we started doing that when we appointed Charlie. He's the only one that's been appointed to the committee at this point in time, as it's been reinitiated.
Yeah, that way there's no one, no way to lose track of who's on the committee or, you know, when they might be, you know, needing to re-up or whatever.
Wouldn't it be one to three years?
That's usually the standard.
Yeah, one to three years, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Shall report to the select board, yes. Elect its own chair, vice chair and clerk, establish regular monthly meetings at a minimum, yes. Meetings and records shall be filed in a timely manner with the town clerk. Minutes approved shall be posted on the town website. I would want to add in here that these need to be recorded meetings. I think we had talked about that earlier. We want to have, you know, as much visibility here and transparency as we go through this process.
Chris, just on that, that's the bullet point I wrote down to add. Said, "The committee shall cause all meetings to be recorded in such a manner to be made available to the citizens consistent with current practices." This shall not apply if conducting site visits.
Right, okay. Right. So it can be, it can be a live meeting, or it can be a Zoom where it then gets uploaded to East Hampton Media, either way. But yes, not necessary to record any site visits to potential sites, I guess, right?
Right.
Or other, other public safety complexes, should they decide to do that. All right. Won't have a budget, but may request funding for specific purposes through the normal town processes, such as finance and capital committees, select board and town meetings. I'm not sure what monies they would need for anything. Have they, they haven't had any kind of budget in the past, have they, ever?
No.
I guess it's okay to state that they wouldn't have a budget.
I don't think it would cost any money, but what, I mean, one thing that I would, I look at, I mean, this is, this is a campaign, right? Because first, we are working under some assumptions. We are working under the assumptions that the citizens as a whole want new public safety complex buildings. And that's why we're getting this committee up and running, because there's a need out there, and we believe that the citizens support that. So one thing to do on the campaign, and I would suggest to this group that they do early on, is they need to go out and conduct some sort of survey and find out what is their starting point. Are they starting with a population that only 25% believe? Because that's where the recordings come in, the education, and, you know, they may want to do a video tour of the existing structures. I mean, you have to figure out where we're starting with the constituents to build for a possible success. If we're going to go through all this work to get to the ballot, I would think that at least this body here is all going to be voting yes for this. But they may need some money for that, but they could come back and ask for it.
Yeah, I see what you mean, yeah. So it's fine to leave that there. I mean, it's something that, right now, they don't have a budget, but they can request it as it's stated here, if there's a, you know, specific need or request. Okay. Members shall serve without financial compensation. True, true.
I mean, I don't think we need to say that. I don't think it's part of any other meeting.
For any committee, so I don't know why that's needed to say.
I would just say that that, this is almost word for word what's on the website for the original 2016 charge.
Is it? Yeah.
Okay. Committee shall review all past reports from prior public safety complex building committee. All right.
I would like to request that what John just said actually ends up in part of the charge, something to do with eliciting, you know, feedback from the public in some fashion.
Well, there's something a little bit further down here. So the next one, the committee shall make efforts to educate the town on the need for this complex, so.
So I think the starting point would be figuring out where, where we are currently.
Yeah. So how would you want to phrase that, though? Develop a...
Elicit input.
Yeah, elicit input to develop a public education campaign or something?
Committee shall make efforts to understand the current perception or view.
Efforts to understand current perception of the need.
Right. And then develop a plan.
So efforts to understand current perception of the need for a public safety complex, yeah? Right?
Right. And then develop, develop a response in accordance with the findings.
Yeah, and if they say...
Because you absolutely, I mean, you want the whole committee to be in favor of this.
Okay, and develop a, sorry, a response or a need?
A response based on those findings. So hypothetically, it comes back with a 99% approval rating, then we should be expedited.
Okay, so reviewing reports, then in between time, okay, so, yeah, efforts to understand the current perception, and then jumping into, committee shall create biddable building plans to incorporate police, fire, emergency management, ambulance, dispatch, and related public health storage requirements once a location is approved by the select board, so.
Should it be the committee shall cause the creation?
Shall what, John?
Shall cause it to be done? I mean, they're not going to do it themselves, right?
They're not going to create the biddable plans themselves, right? They will...
Building design and plans.
Yeah. I like the last piece, ones approved by the select board.
Yeah, I mean, doesn't, I mean, don't we have to talk about things in terms of location? I mean, that's been the stumbling block for the last 10 years, as far as I understand here. So there's got to be something before you worry about creating biddable building plans.
Right. Secure an appropriate location.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, insert a bullet point?
Yeah.
Identify.
I don't know. Research and recommend or something like that?
Yeah, identify two, identify a minimum of two locations to be considered and put forward in the select board. And then assuming we select one location, then they can move on to the design piece.
Do we have to talk about, I mean, the other day, we were talking, as we were starting to look at this property on 217 College Highway, the issue of, you know, should we focus first on lands that we currently own? I mean, that was part of our discussion at one point in time, that to try and minimize the cost of this thing with land being a huge piece of that cost. Do we want to, you know, do a, do a review of town-owned properties and...
We always, the assessor's office answered my request for all, all the properties we currently own. It went to all of us. So whichever one of us sits on that committee could share that list of 92 parcels. It's pretty clearly marked, if you haven't looked at it, which ones are the non-pro, you know, exclude the church and that, and you can get down to just what the kind of parcels are.
Right, and there's various ones that are conservation, et cetera.
Now, are we going to, do we have to hold to the, to the requirement that the property be within a half-mile radius of the center of town?
Why?
And how much, well, that's a requirement now.
That was a requirement to the extent, I think John talked about that, in terms of affecting our fire insurance.
So he's referring to the iOS rating of the five-minute drive?
Centerly located within...
He mentioned 0.5 miles from the center of town. Will not negatively impact anybody's insurance.
Insurance, yeah.
I'm happy to produce the maps. We do them at work. If you pick a location, you can see where it shifts, because right now, there's a portion of the town that isn't covered under the five-mile radius per the ISO.
That'd be great, John.
Yeah, okay.
But you just got to give me the locations, and I can show you the maps on what adjusts.
All right, so where we identify a minimum of two locations to be considered, starting with town-owned properties? Is that what we want to say?
Yeah.
Well, it's at least expensive, right?
I think that's why West Hampton, Williamsburg, and the rest of them have been able to do this. Prioritizing town property.
Take the highway department. You want a new building?
Yeah. Okay. Then we get into, whatever. Would it have to be an RFP for design work or what would it have to be, rather than saying biddable building plans?
Well, you can do an RFP, you can do an RFQ. Yeah, you can do either.
So would it make, that change that paragraph? I don't know what the wording would be, but once a location is selected?
Create.
Receive direction from the select board on which way to go? You may be in a spot where first you, because at this point, they don't, they wouldn't have gotten to an architectural design yet.
No.
No.
Right, so, and then if that's the direction we're going in versus, and I have no idea, or if they're just going to say, "Well, here are the old plans, they're already done, we just want to put those on," we might skip it, but I'm...
Yeah, I think it's a...
I'm just saying, the farther we get down, I think we could then more define that step.
Okay. So once, once a location is identified and approved by the select board...
An additional charge will come from the select board.
Yeah, I think that's, because this feels like jumping ahead. Okay.
Subsequent charges will come.
Yeah. Step one, identify a location. Identify two suitable locations for consideration.
Okay. Because I think the problem in the past, the most, the two problems ago, was the design was way over. I mean, the town was not at all.
Taj Mahal.
I mean, and I think there was a, I think they realized it, that there was, there was more than Southampton needed, and they were just dealing with, you know, what were the, you know, what's their wish list.
Well, at that point, one of the pieces may be that the select board needs to recommend to the building committee of what that budget may be, you know, whether that is six to, you know, $8 million or $7, $8 million or whatever the dollar figure comes out to, so at least they know the parameters when they're working with the architect and takes that piece of, okay, Taj Mahal maybe out of it.
Right. But that would be when, when we talk about creating subsequent charges in terms of the next, you know, getting through this part, and then the next phase of, you know, sort of marching directions would be to be determined.
Right. Yeah, because I would, I would suggest to take, Chris, you up on one of your thoughts earlier, some prior meeting, that, you know, simultaneously, while this is all happening right now, I think the select board in January or February, whether we meet in a regular meeting or we go and meet individually, we should meet with our state senator and our state rep and make pushes for, to try and get one-time funding from Boston. And we can show that we're running this parallel to make this whole thing happen, and that might change our view on what the second step would be when we get there.
Yep, that's a good point. Yep, exactly. Okay. Okay. All right, any other thought? Is there something else that you want to add to the charge here? Is this getting okay, or do we need?
I just want to make sure that the language about the seniors says, represents the senior community.
Okay.
Because I think when you have somebody that is surrounded, like somebody from friends that, you know, automatically has 30 people to turn to. I mean, I'm a senior, but that doesn't mean that I'm at the center in meetings with people, going to luncheons and have access. I think the whole point of this is to get a broad input.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure it says represent seniors.
Okay, so it represents the senior community, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Would you want, would you want that the, should we charge the friends with the, with the council on aging to identify their representatives? So it doesn't necessarily have to be somebody from their board, it could be, but something, you know, but they put forward the name of who that person is, possibly.
Yeah.
I mean, that's one way to go. Hopefully, we could find somebody with some of his background.
They already did. We held off from appointing anybody until we did this thing. So just so you know, I think they already did vote to present somebody to...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we haven't...
And I know from the friends meeting, I think their big concern is they're about to embark on a project themselves, and they're spreading a little bit thin here, and somebody just joined PQB who had experience with PQB, who was on the COA board. So I think they're, they're hoping that they're not going to be pulled into all these committees. So I think friends and COA together would be the way to represent seniors.
So the generic comment of represents the senior community is probably good enough, rather than saying specifically the board or the friends percent, right?
Yeah, I don't know, unless, what John said, I mean, I think they should be represent, because a lot of us are seniors, that doesn't mean we represent the senior community. Friends do, and the COA does. So maybe it should say that. I don't know what other people think.
You could say represents the senior community as suggested by either the COA board or, or the friends. I mean, I think...
But just say a member of either the COA or the friends of the COA.
Okay, that's where we were. Okay, that's where we were.
Right. I mean, do other people agree with that, or?
I don't object to it.
Okay, that's fine. I think we know what we're talking about, sort of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who's on first?
I don't know. Okay, does that get everybody? So we've got town administrator, one select board, police chief, fire chief, member of the council on aging board, or the friends of seniors, Southampton seniors, COA, member of the finance committee, member of historical commission, and probably four members of the community, of the community, of the town and/or surrounding communities, preferably with some, not, not limiting it, but possibly with some experience or qualifications in engineering, construction, architecture, financial management, or previous public safety experience. Something like that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'm, oh, I'm sorry for asking.
I just want to mention that the friends already did select a representative.
Okay.
And that's Cindy Palmer.
Okay. Yep.
Okay. The, for the police chief and fire chief, under their terms, what about, it's just by the mere fact they hold that office. So hypothetically...
They're de facto?
If, if something, you know, if even Ian had to take a six-month leave, there would be an acting chief. Whoever's in that role would fill it. So those two spots, the terms don't ever renew. It's the fact that they hold that office, that they have that spot. So if we get into an acting capacity or something, you know what I mean?
Theoretically, that would be Ed as well.
Right. Correct. Yep. Well, he's not going anywhere.
Okay.
This is ADA compatible. We can wheelchair him in here.
Hopefully, just a cane than getting to the wheelchair.
Okay, good.
Do you want to vote to approve it as amended, or?
I think if we're pretty clear on this, are we? Joy, any thoughts, any additions over there?
Looks good to me.
Okay, then, yeah, we could have a motion in terms of what we've tried to elaborate here. Hopefully, our notes are somewhat clear to ourselves here.
Actually, you did a good job just reviewing it all. That's what I had.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion then to approve the composition of the public safety complex. And again, I don't know if that, is that what the committee's charge called?
I think it's been a couple of things. Public safety complex, public safety building complex, I don't know.
Right now, it says public safety complex committee.
Complex committee, yeah.
The PSCC.
Yeah, well, you know...
I would prefer it be public safety building committee.
Okay.
Because the committee might decide to do...
Separate buildings.
Separate buildings.
Okay. Public safety building committee. Let's go with that. Okay.
So anyway, I started the motion that it consists of basically, do you want me to read it again? Town administrator, select board representative, police chief, fire chief, member representing the senior community via the friends or the council on aging, member of the finance committee, member of the historical committee, and full members of the community or neighboring, surrounding community with background in either construction, engineering, architecture, finance, or public safety building experience.
Okay.
So a total of 11.
Okay. Could I have a second to that?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And I'll, someone has to do the charge.
Yeah.
And got lost a little bit towards the end.
Okay, I'll see if I can go through the charge, just so that we have it. Terms of the appointment shall be for one to three years, staggered appointments, report to the select board, elect its own chair, vice chair and clerk, establish regular monthly meetings as a minimum. Establish regular monthly meetings as a minimum. All minutes and records shall be filed in a timely manner with the town clerk. Minutes approved, improvements, whatever shall be posted on the town's website. Minutes...sorry, meetings should be recorded and made available to residents with the exception of any site visits. I'm not sure if I said that right, John.
Can I ask a question? Is there a...is there a bylaw that says when minutes should be posted? Isn't it by the next...
It's actually under the open meeting laws.
Yeah.
It's...
Within two to three meetings, isn't it?
Isn't it within 30 days?
Yeah.
Within what?
I believe it's by the second meeting afterwards.
By the second or third meeting afterwards at the most, yeah. Within open meeting law?
I just think posting of minutes has been a problem with this committee and I addressed it last time. So I just want to make sure it's consistent with the bylaws.
Shall be filed in a timely manner according to open meeting law with the town clerk?
Yeah.
All right. Meetings shall be recorded and recordings made available to residents with the exception of any site visits that do not need to be recorded. Committee shall not have a budget but may request funding for specific purposes through the normal town processes when the need arises, if the need arises. Members shall...I don't know. Did we say that we should put...
I don't think we need that.
I think we can cross out members shall serve without financial compensation. I don't think that needs to be there. Let's see. Committee shall review all past reports from prior Public Safety Complex Building Committee. Okay. Hang on now. Here's where it got a little funny. Okay. The committee shall make efforts to understand the current perception for the need of the Public Safety Building Committee and develop a response based on those findings. Hang on, hang on, hang on. The committee shall identify a minimum of two suitable locations to be considered... to be considered starting with town-owned properties. And let's see. I guess I would say the committee will...once that is presented to the select board for review and decision, the committee will receive subsequent charges from the select board. Subsequent charges from the select board in terms of the way forward or something like that.
Yeah.
How's that sound? Sort of?
Yeah.
Okay. With that in mind, could somebody just sort of make that motion?
Oh, okay. What about the last thing that was listed? The committee shall assist the select board in presentations at town meetings, budget meetings. Or is that all...
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to end it with...
Well, that's okay. We can put it in there. I mean, it would happen at some point, yeah. Shall add the one...shall assist what they have here. Shall assist the select board in presentations at town meetings, budget meetings, public forums as needed. Yes. Okay. So having said all that, could I have a motion to make that...
So moved.
Okay, thank you very much. Could I have a second? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much.
Have we appointed our member?
Well, we have a sort of a...I don't know. Were you the liaison?
I was before, but let's...maybe we can next time and when we're appointing others, we can discuss it.
Yeah, okay. Let's wait until we get...
I was ready to give a tour.
Do you want to now?
I think we can discuss it. I think we should discuss it.
Want to discuss it? Okay, we'll hold on. We'll hold on. All right, thanks. All right. Okay, jumping on. Okay, COVID-19 update. Do we have more to say about that?
Basically, the numbers are rising. Omicron is becoming the predominant, shall we say, variant that's out there. It's changing every day, it seems, in the last week. I know the Massachusetts DPH, actually, it's not a mandate, but they changed to a mask advisory as of today for any indoor public places, whether they be, you know, supermarkets, theaters, you know, gyms, restaurants, entertainment, what have you, so...
Okay. And we heard earlier that we are going to a mask mandate as of midnight, is that right?
Absolutely. And if any of you hadn't heard, and I commend you for continuing the contact tracing, is Worthington Elementary School announced that they were closing for a week effective today because of the positive cases they had within the elementary school. They had 33 close contacts alone.
Where was this?
Worthington.
Worthington. And Worthington, now, this is an elementary school, but the students have siblings and those siblings could be in Hampshire Regional, so...
Who mingle with our senior, our Hampshire Regional kids who come back home?
Yep.
Yep.
So, yeah, no, I think the contact tracing we...
I think it's very important, so...
Yeah, okay. All right. If nothing else on that, CARES Act update. So here we are, 10 days before it finally ends upon us, after all this time of going through CARES stuff. You know, and I don't know that we're spending down to the penny, you know, on anything, quite honestly. I mean, we're, you know, we certainly have used up the bulk of the money.
I think we've used probably 85% to 90% of it. It's been spent, so...
Well, given that we're one week before the end of the year, are there any...anything that's been expended already? I mean, at this point, it'd be hard to order, get. Is there anything that's been expended already in any department that would qualify for CARES Act funding?
Oh, you mean it wasn't purchased under CARES Act?
It wasn't purchased under CARES Act.
I don't think so, but Bradley and I can look at that.
Take a look and see what's possible.
Shift something.
And for the most part, salaried people were not charged into COVID. Am I correct?
What's that?
Were salaried people ever charged into COVID?
Yes.
They were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For when they were out due to COVID?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about employees who were working, who worked through this time. Were they ever charged any percent of their time into COVID as a way of recovering?
CARES Act, was it applied to CARES Act?
I'm sorry, yes, to CARES Act.
Percentage doesn't work.
Well, what I'm...
You have to have direct usage in those hours.
All I'm saying is can any...I'm sure that the police chief who didn't charge into the CARES Act spent time on it, as did the fire chief, and it did it. So that was never reflected in any of the expenses.
Their normal wages, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Their normal wages, were they...
It's their normal wages. You don't pay any extra over that, so...
No, I'm not saying extra. But they weren't doing what their normal job would have been, that the town was paying them for. They were doing something extra as a result of COVID.
They are not being paid for something extra directly due to COVID.
Not extra, Ed, but if there was...
Not extra.
X amount for salary for John, for example, for the fire chief. And whatever, out of his eight-hour day, three hours were on the ambulance with a COVID case, running back and forth to the hospital. Could he have charged...
Three hours.
Could he have charged three of his hours that day to CARES?
No.
Okay, why? Because?
Salary.
It's salary dependent.
Salary, it's not an incremental cost directly due to COVID.
Okay. So it's only been those people that have claimed it have been those that have been working...
And only hourly people.
Right. And...
I get that.
You...you...I was on quarantine at one point.
Yeah, but that...those were.
It's different.
Yeah.
They are asking me if in your...
I get the other part.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody that was out due to family exposure or personal exposure...
They were charged.
They were able to charge their time to the CARES Act.
But none of the response, none of their work time was able to be charged.
Okay. No.
No. Conversely, if at any point you had said, let's see... Can't do it with the president. If you had said the highway superintendent or the town administrator, even though you're salary, we understand that you are going to work an extra 10 hours a week due to this COVID and we are going to now compensate you, whether you're under a, you know, a contract or whatever, an extra $10,000 for the year for that, then yes, we could have done it.
Had to be over and above your regular time.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, if it's between giving the money back to the state or applying it to the school, because we never funded the full amount that we could have under COVID expenses to the Norris School.
Well, we gave them a huge chunk.
I know we did. But, okay, so what's the choice? I mean, if you can't come up with another expense, do we give it back to the state?
Well, I don't know that we have another $10,000 request from the school either. We gave them what they asked for.
I don't think they got 100% of what they asked for. There was another charge, wasn't it?
Sure, the school would be happy to take another eight or 10,000 and, you know, once I do the calculation.
And get spent before the next 10 days?
Rather than say go back, yeah.
Are they not on vacation?
Wasn't there funds? There was HVAC, there was the nurses' salary, there's like a lot of things.
We did that.
So we spent 43,000, call it 43,000, on enhancing the eye waves and all that. Of that 43,000, we reallocated $12,501 so that we could close last year's books and zero that out. So in theory, yeah, there's another 28,000 that's already been done and paid, right? If you follow me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would say, I would say first step is, right, today's Tuesday, to check with Bradley and see if there's anything on the town side that could be reclassed.
Yeah.
And but as a last resort, with...as you're on your way out the door for Christmas, just throw it up to Norris if you can't find anything versus giving it back to the state.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Okay. There's nothing else from the library or anything else that we thought could be...
Nothing major, no.
We got the boiler and stuff, does that... Not really?
No extra cost on the generator? I just got it. You reminded me to check. It would be low, low anyway. I mean, we're talking probably 100-ish, so it's not going to be any big ticket. You're there, it's coming out of your budget.
All right, well, let's...
You're there, it's coming out of your budget.
Well, let's see with Bradley then if there's any other thoughts. But I think, you know, I think we answered the whole employee and another one. The only one that...and I think it came up tonight with the Board of Health, is when the health director was working extra time on COVID-related things.
Right, and she was paid through COVID wages. That got charged.
And that was...
She was not salaried.
That was, right. So that was beyond her normal workday, is that right?
Correct.
She also got DPH funding way back in the beginning.
Yeah. So that's the only one that would have had something salary-related, I think, toward...
Wages, it's very hard to say wages or whatever.
Pretty much so. The library paid their substitutes that they could get in through the COVID wages because of the extra duties, whether it was, you know, the bag drop and pickup for the books or elsewhere.
Right, right. Okay.
I'll make a motion that whatever amount was originally earmarked for signage from the fire department be reallocated at Ed and Bradley's review. If it can be applied to an existing town expense that can be shifted to CARES Act and qualifies to do that first. Otherwise, then apply it towards Norris School, CARE, COVID-related expense.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, it's passed. Okay, Ed?
Thank you.
All right, moving on. The reminder, Community Outlook submission request. That's something the reminder is putting out in addition in January, apparently, with news from the various towns that they service. And I know Rini's done this editorial-type presentation, not presentation, but an article in the past. And I've said that I will work on that and get it submitted, so I would intend to have it ready for you. I think the due date is like the 7th or 8th of January. I'll be working on it and get it to you for the next meeting that we have on the floor. That should be plenty of time for them. I'd like everybody to look at it and give any edits or comments, okay?
Okay.
Revenue and expenditures, FY '22 updates. How are we doing there, Ed? Now, just on the dates of these reports, just to be sure. I see that obviously the expense report, he's put in the full year's worth, but on the revenue report, is that only till October still or is that...we have July?
No, this one is through October, the November packets have not been validated or posted at this point.
For the revenue.
And on the expense, is it through what the date is on the bottom of the report, 12/16?
Maybe...
Just checked that. It would be a Thursday's date, so 16th sounds correct, but let me double-check that.
Okay.
Yes, through December 16th, correct.
Okay. Yep.
I'm sure it's timing, but the transfers from the STA aren't in there, so that'll probably show up in next ones.
Right. That was going to be a question. So do we...at what point can we transfer? Can we act upon the transfers that were approved at the special town meeting? Do we wait until we get approval of all the stuff from the Attorney General? Or can we move on those things now? All the results of the special town meeting and all the transfers that have to happen?
What approval from the Attorney General?
When the special town meeting minutes go to the Attorney General, don't they?
They don't approve. The only thing Attorney General would approve would be a bylaw.
Just a bylaw, that's it?
Exactly.
All right.
Actually, as of this afternoon, we've got probably three-quarters of the transfers or any new accounts from the special town meeting set up.
Yeah, I saw that. That's pretty quick.
Okay. So this doesn't reflect the...
This does not.
Does reflect the, okay.
I'm hoping we'll have them completed and will be the expenditure report that would be able to be issued for this Thursday, which would be the 23rd, would have the payroll for this week. And I'm hoping all of the transfers or new accounts or CPC things reflected in that expenditure report.
If that gets done, could you forward that to us just for information without...
I probably shouldn't say this. I'm very literal. I could...
Would you, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
I know, it's getting late, we're getting there. Okay, would you please forward that just for our information, even though we won't have a meeting for a couple of weeks, but just to see what that's looking like?
I just want to address something that John said. I think the special town minutes need to be approved for the library to get their MARS accreditation.
Yeah, she mentioned that.
That's what it needs to be approved, that's why it needs to be approved by the state.
Okay. So we have the minutes. I've seen a draft, anyway, of the minutes from Lucy, right?
Yep.
Am I not?
Barbara has already sent them the certified minutes along to the state. She had sent that every report tonight, so it's all taken care of.
All taken care of. So we don't need to move on anything else?
No.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Can I ask a timing question?
Yep.
What is the...so I'm looking at in general. Okay, let's take the Norris vertical blinds replacement. So that was under capital and the budget is 14,470. I saw an expense in the warrant for the vertical blinds. So it was on one of the warrants that was signed and it's also in the expense report here. that was signed, and it's also in the expense report here. Does that happen simultaneously, like, is that, they posted pretty much together, so as soon as the warrant is posted, it ends up on here as an expense on the expense report?
As soon as it's posted. Now, the process, just so you're aware of it, both on the revenue and the, and the revenue actually takes a lot longer, and the expense side is, Genday will put the packets together for the revenues, and they can sit there, at some point she'll validate them. Once they're validated, then the town accountant is supposed to double-check those and make sure the accounts and the dollar amounts are correct. Once the town accountant does that, the town accountant will actually post that revenue packet, and then it will show up on the revenue report. For vendor warrants, town accountant posts it, or I shouldn't say posts it, town accountant will actually enter them, will then double-check them and validate them, then send that, that'll, that'll be signed by the select board representative, and it'll go to the town treasurer, who will then double-check that and make sure everything's correct on it. Once the treasurer-collector has authorized it, said everything's okay, and the checks are printed, then the town accountant can go in and post that vendor warrant. Once it's posted, in that final step, then it will show up on the expense report. So if you've got packets out there that haven't been posted yet for whatever reason, even though we may have actually expended those funds or had funds come in, they won't show on those reports.
Right.
I made a long, long story out of.
Isn't it, isn't it accurate to say, is it accurate to say for expenses, excluding payroll, that expenses excluding payroll, a physical check is not actually cut until it completes the cycle in the town accountant's office? Right, all the packets go up, and then when, when that packet actually goes through, that's when the checks are generated? So it's like an in-process?
Correct.
Yeah.
And actually, actually that is true for even payroll itself. I mean, although probably 80 to 90% of the payroll is direct deposit versus, you know, real, real check, but yeah, the processes of both are very similar.
And what is?
I was just trying to figure what, so there's two charges under the warrants for Chilson's shops, I'm assuming that's the vertical blind replacement. The total is over 16,000, and the budget, or, yeah, the budget for that is 14,470, so one of them. So I'm just wondering, what is the lag time between the time that something is paid in the warrant and is posted on the expense?
From the time that the town accountant gets it and enters it to it's posted?
Yeah.
They, those warrants are submitted to the town accountant every Thursday by 10:00 AM.
Yeah.
For entry, and if they, if there are no issues with them, they will be entered and posted by the following Thursday.
So three weeks max?
No, actually, a week max.
Okay. Okay, and then back though on the revenue side, with the packets that have been received at the treasurer level and worked on, those, before they get to, to the accountant, there's a verification process that happens there?
Once it's ready, treasurer-collector will have to validate that packet. Once it's validated, what the town accountant will then have to do is basically print that off, and then their job is to, whether it's through ACH, which is basically electronic payments, the turnover slips that Randall would send in, or Judy would send in from revenues coming in and go to the collector-treasurers office, those all have to be verified dollar-wise, whether they're check or cash-wise and account-wise. And once that, and that process depending on if there's any issues with it, can take now, could take, you know, maybe two to three weeks at the worst, and then once everything is verified and correct, then it would be posted.
Okay. But then the treasurer normally would prepare a packet monthly, is that it, for all the monthly income that's come in, or is it more, less frequently than that?
Treasurer-collector does two major, two major packets a month, and a couple of minor ones.
Okay. So again, within that timeframe and getting it off to the accountant, we're talking a couple of weeks or something of all that process?
Once it's validated, because that packet, as it's being worked on, could take any, you know, could take anywhere from a couple of weeks to a month to finish off.
Chris, could I ask, Rainey, on the Chilson one, are you, are you looking at the 14,470?
Yeah, and I see that there's some other.
And there's another one for like 1,400?
Yeah, two different accounts.
Exactly.
Yeah, I just noticed that.
Yep, okay. All right, any other comments on revenue and expenditures otherwise?
I had a question, let me just get to it. There is some, on the warrant, actually, I'm not at the warrant yet, so I'll wait until then.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Nothing else on revenue and expenditure? Okay, all right. With that, let's keep on moving. Cost efficiency, alternative committee discussions and appointments. The appointments that were made last time, hopefully those that were made have gone by Lucy's to get sworn in, and I would just like to point out that in today's Gazette, we have, under Cities and Towns, an article entitled "New Committee Forming to Strengthen Town's Financial Health." So this is, again, a pretty good article by our new town reporter who's following Southampton pretty well, and hopefully folks take a look at it. We're still looking for a couple of town residents to join us that have got especially some financial management background or some HR background to really help us out on this committee. So now's your time to get involved and be part of the, part of the solution, as we try to improve both efficiencies and cost savings here in town. And we had sent out a survey, John, did you see results in that yet, or? We had sent out a little poll to figure out if we could find a common time to have a meeting just to start this and?
We've got, I forget how many people it went to.
Uh, probably eight, eight or nine, eight, eight I think.
Okay. Did that get sent out?
I sent out an email.
Did you see the school questions?
Okay, I missed it.
Yes, I did.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, so far we've got five responses.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, to say that we probably, I'm going to guess that we're not going to find anything before the end of December, so it'll be probably in the early part of January. We put out a few choices of dates and times, and whether people wanted to try and meet in person or by Zoom, so we'll try to find that commonality there, and once we know that, we'll let everybody know. Okay, good. Looking forward to getting the committee started here soon. All right, ARPA survey update, we're into surveys these days. I'm almost done, I did send out an email to everybody late this afternoon, everybody meaning select board and Ed, to try and, and take the, the survey. I, I know there's a couple glitches in it, this is my first time playing with the backend of Survey Monkeys here, so there's a couple questions where if you answer yes or no, it should take you to another question, or it should stop and say, okay, you're done, submit the survey. So I know I've got some tweaks to do on that, and I'm going to be working on that, but if anybody has any further thoughts on questions, sort of speak now or forever hold your peace, because I really want to put the question part to bed. We have 12 questions on the survey, the couple people that I saw take it took somewhere between five and six minutes per, per person, so it's not a heavy-duty survey that's going to take anybody a long time to submit, but I'd like to get it, once I feel like we've got it clear on the backend of how it needs to go and where, where the responses are going to go. We want to probably post it out on our website as a link, as well as that could then be picked up and just put over onto the community Facebook page as well, but it would be a link for people to click into, would also have a QR code, and I want to also have it available manually, paperwise rather, hard copy, so that people that don't have access to the internet and computers could fill it out, and then turn it in by hand, and that allows us to also enter in those responses electronically. So that will be the, the goal of it, and I think realistically with the holidays, I don't know that anybody's going to be focusing on surveys much. I'm going to say that, you know, maybe as of our January 4th meeting, that would be the time to probably launch the, the survey itself officially out to the town, okay?
So are you asking us to take the survey, give feedback, time it, and let Ed know?
I see what the time is, no, I'll, I'll see the responses.
Okay.
But if you're, if you think a question is not clear, if it's not allowing you to do something, if something is grayed out, or any, any issues you have with the survey, how it presents itself to you, just, just shoot me an email and let me know.
We should probably send it to Ed.
I did, I copied it.
No, 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 I said, I think we should, we're not supposed to deliberate on things. I know it's, it's kind of, I don't know, I don't think it's going to be content-related, it's just going to be like survey.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Sure. Okay, with that said, let's keep on the moving here. Any other business that can't wait until the next January 4th meeting? Anybody have anything left, man?
I just had one question. Could you tell us where we are with minutes? When I was looking, I was, when I was looking for some minutes to go back to look at the CARES Act, when we talked about it and did the last, you know, like switching, I saw that there were a lot of minutes that are missing in the last three months, so I'm just wondering, do you know where we are in terms of the minutes? It seems like we approve some regularly, but then I, are they posted by the clerk as soon as she gets them? Because that was, I think, an issue with the Public Safety Committee too.
No, she's, well, clerk doesn't post them, Judy would post them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, usually as soon as they're approved, she'll put them online.
Okay. So are we more than two months behind on minutes, would you say?
I thought we were catching up pretty well.
I thought we were too, but I just went to the website tonight, and I think we're probably falling behind a little bit.
Now, are you looking at all the meetings?
I think so.
Okay, because, yeah, some of those are going to be executive session, they aren't going to get posted.
Okay, right, the ones that were every other week. It just seemed like there were a lot of them that were, seemed like we're slipping a little bit.
Yeah, we'll double-check on that though.
Okay.
All right.
But I'll double-check on that.
And I have one other question, and this is really about ARPA, I think. When we had our police chief present the last time, he mentioned that the ARPA funds do cover for the police training, but not the time, and that that was a huge barrier to getting people to go to the training and therefore be able to stay on the force.
Yeah.
Would ARPA funds cover their time?
Well, I, I thought, I thought the, the specific issue was part-time Southampton employees have a full-time job, say as a metal worker, would have to take vacation time from that job.
Right.
To go to the training.
To go to the academy on our side.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's how I understood it too.
Oh, okay, yeah, I thought, I thought it was that they.
No, we can pay for their training and they, we can pay for the time that they're here, but they're giving up, say.
From their full-time.
If you send them to a 22-week academy or whatever, and they've got maybe three or four weeks' vacation at their other position.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that we cannot compensate them for.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not going to be an incentive for sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, no other signatures, no PCFs, PRS, no licenses or permits? Francine, how about warrants?
Warrants, W 22-23, vendor payable for $94,987.92. W 22-23, ENC, I'm not sure what that stands for, but it was something payable to Hampshire Regional High School as the vendor for $6,827.68. P 22-24 for a payroll warrant, $296,493.48. PD 22-24 payroll deduction in the amount of $43,536.69. And W 22-25, vendor payable warrant for $399,047.87.
Okay. We had a couple questions on those already, is there any other questions on those?
Why, two questions, this one's to Ed, on the East Hampton Media peg programming, they just reminded me, are we 100%, we got all the equipment that we were, we were waiting for?
Yeah, the last, the last piece should have been that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's nothing else?
Nothing else, I mean, there's some tweaks, and I don't know how much they actually spent on it, but there's a couple tweaks I'd still like to perhaps see come through. One that East Hampton Media themselves brought up, and then, I mean, one, one thing I'd like to get added to the equipment is having a wireless microphone of our own for the room. And then one piece that East Hampton Media themselves brought up is the issue that if someone wanted to meet in here and not be, and wasn't able to be live-streamed and set their own, you know, do their own recording of the meeting, we can't do that right now. It would require some additional equipment, so, I mean, but I, I will say that East Hampton Media has been very helpful and where they can accommodate us if someone does want to meet in this room and can't, they can't live-stream it, they have been very helpful to get that meeting recorded so far, but it's recorded at that end, at their headquarters.
Okay. The second question, did you want to say something?
No, I was going to say, at some point, I think, I would like to see us figure out how to use that wonderful screen over there so we can make use of it somehow.
My first step is to figure out how I.
Or that one.
Can use that projector, but, yeah, this I got to work about 80 to 90% of the way. We were trying to use it for, I forget, was it a bylaw committee meeting, Francine?
Yeah, we tried to have a Zoom.
Yeah, and I forget if it was either the person on the other end couldn't hear us or we couldn't hear them, but it worked about, to that point, so.
I would just, on your wish list with East Hampton Media, it'd be great if up at the chair spot there was a switch.
If what?
If up at the chair's desk there was a switch that the chair could throw if need be, that just killed the microphones.
Yeah.
In the event something became unruly or executive session, just for a peace of mind.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
If you're compiling a wish list.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good idea.
Yeah, the question I had had to do with, under, there's a category and there's one, two, three, four, five, so without revealing any employee names.
Yeah.
There's five people that are listed on the COVID-19 wages.
Mm-hmm.
Is that specifically CARES Act?
Yes.
Yeah.
It would be, yeah.
Yeah, that's that account, the 105 account.
Let me, let me do it this way.
Yeah.
That's the 100 account, yeah.
It just doesn't really say where the funding comes from, so I was just wondering if that was in fact CARES Act money that it's coming from?
Yeah.
And?
It is.
Is this mostly replacement wages, or what, what qualifies under that without giving detail that would, we don't want to give?
That's extra hours.
Okay.
Okay. That is quarantining.
Okay.
The other ones, I'm, think are substitutes.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
In the library.
The hours are being paid, but I will double-check on that, just to confirm that.
That makes sense, Ed. Okay, that is, right, the library, okay, it's the library.
Yep.
Never mind, Ed, I think we, she had mentioned that, and I think we actually dealt with that before.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, moving on, no minutes to approve, we already dealt with the Hendrick Land donation deed and acceptance. I don't know that we have anything urgent on the pending issues.
No.
I'm going to suggest that we get back to the naming rights and other things on our next meeting, look at any of the other bylaws, et cetera, anything else that we have to update there.
How's that building, Randall?
What's that?
The charter building.
I've heard nothing about it.
It's empty though, right?
There's been an alarm going off, I didn't feel like the last one.
Really?
Oh, really? Power.
Yes, with the power.
Interesting.
I thought they had stripped all the equipment out of it already.
Two.
Okay, all right.
Locks still.
So with that, I don't know that we have any other business, and at this point in time, we need to go into executive session, so can I, let's see, what do I need to do here? So, let me read the reasons for going into executive session. I don't have the right ones, okay. So, we will be going into executive session momentarily, and this is per MGL Chapter 30A Section 21A Number 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares police. And MGL Chapter 30A Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares highway. With that in mind, could I have a motion to adjourn and move into executive session?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Francine and Jen?
Yep. All in favor, roll call, please.
Lumbra, aye.
Fishman, aye. Broden, aye.
Paper, aye.
Foul's, aye. Okay, meeting, regular meeting is adjourned.